I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ohio Planning Commission for Wednesday, December 20th now, in the Chamber Councils here. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card and file it with our secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the Chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Chair Merk.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Commissioners Nolan.
Here.
Jagiello.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Isabella.
Here.
Commissioner Powers absent.
Thank you. Commissioner Nolan, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is Public Communications. This is the time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Does anyone want to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Daddy?
There is no item. It's an open item, that's why I'm here to speak. Hey, we got pretty lucky, didn't we? We didn't lose a structure, we didn't lose a life. This is something we predicted for years. I'm going to be here just as a plain old person that got evacuated, and I'm going to ask the commission to go ahead and schedule for the next agenda item or the agenda after that, because I know you can't speak. We can speak, you just can't do anything. And I'm going to ask you folks to start hardening the codes, help us harden the codes. We kind of have like a nine and a half issue. We have some Title Nines, we have some Title Tens. I think what it is time for us to do is put our heads together, rewrite some of these codes, look at some of the zoning issues, get some of these things rendered to paper, and actually make some recommendations to the City Council, because we've been doing this for years. We should do this, it's really time. So I think what we should do is go ahead and communicate however we can based on the Brown Act. And go ahead and get a pretty definitive list to council. I think they're to the point where they realize that we really need to move on and make this a firewise community. And we have some other issues that you've brought up where Title IX needs to be changed for building, for solar, for gray water, for recirculating, for all of these different issues that you've been talking about when you have all these projects come ahead of you. Because we're going to have to do things for water conservation that's going to be fairly drastic in the future. We really need to start now. So what I would ask you to do is get together, let's see what you can do as far as recommendations, and we'll help you make some recommendations, and then we'll see what we can do is get in a little group together under the vision or control or permission of the council. And let's get them something together. Let's don't do it like we've been doing, which is it never gets done. Let's set a date, because we have a fire map revision coming up in May with Cal Fire, and let's get a target. And we almost always make our targets if we'll set one, so you guys can set one, and hopefully next agenda you'll have something on the item, and I'll come back and I'll speak from the other board, okay? Hey, and I want to appreciate, I want to tell you, I appreciate what you do. I thank you for being here. This is a lot of work, you spend a lot of time, you got a lot of things to go over. It's not sitting here for an hour, two, or three. It's sitting with that great big look, book, going over all the plans and going, well, what if this does this, and what if that does that? Anyhow, again, thank you for the time that you put in. It is a really tremendous job that you're doing. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Jay. Anyone else want to speak on an item not on the agenda? I would just like to take this moment to thank all the firefighters, first responders. This meeting was actually originally scheduled for December 6th, and my wife and I spent that meeting in Buellton watching the fire map and the fire just closing in the city, and I thought, we may not have anything to plan for in the future, you know? If that fire had kept going, we wouldn't have a town. So I'm just really thankful to all those people that helped keep things the way they are. Anyway, we're going to move on with our meeting. First item on our agenda is the consent items. All matters listed on the consent calendar or to be continued routine by the governing bodies will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no discussion of these items unless before the governing body votes on the motion to adopt. Specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. We only have one consent item, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for November 15th, 2017. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I'll move adoption of those minutes.
All right. Is there a second?
I will make a second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Nolan.
Yes.
Jagiello.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Merk.
Yes.
Isabella.
Yes.
Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Could we start with Commissioner Nolan?
Yes, I visited the sites, and I did want to say, although I'm not involved with, it's, let me get the item number, excuse me, with the project, but I have worked for both of the property owners, and that would be, excuse me here, I'm flipping my pages around here. It's, I think it's the, yes, item number five. I just wanted to disclose that, that I have worked for both property owners.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jagiello?
Yes, I visited all the sites and I had no ex parte contact.
Thank you. Mr. Corbin?
I visited the sites and had no ex parte contact.
I visited all the sites and had no ex parte contacts.
All right. Commissioner Isabella?
I visited all the sites and had no ex parte contacts, but for conversations that I've had on the discussion item for 310 East Elisa with the owner of the property. I represented her when she bought the property, and this was one of the things that was discussed along the way, but that was some time ago, and of course, there's been no thumbs up or thumbs down from me in regard to what may or may not occur.
Thank you. And I visited each of the sites and had no ex parte contacts. So now we'll move on with our public hearing items. First item is Design Review Permit, DRP 17-11, Variance VAR 1701, and Sign Permit S 17-21 for the remodel and new patio to be located in the setback and for the change of use from the Ojai Valley Cleaners to Topa Topa Brewing Company, a beer tasting room with alcoholic beverage sales on site, as well as a small kitchen serving the customers of the tasting room located at 345 East Ojai Avenue. Could we hear from staff on this, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, Jay Higgins was the project planner for all these cases this evening, and will be making the presentation.
The project involves a tenant improvement to the front portion of the existing building to remove some of the existing dry cleaning business operations and a replacement in that area with a beer tasting area, kitchen, and dining area. The surface parking in the front of the property is proposed to be replaced with outdoor seating. The dry cleaning business will remain in a smaller configuration in the middle portion of the building, and there are no other changes proposed to the retail space in the rear. We reviewed the project for design review findings. We reviewed the project for variance findings for the encroachments into the front yard setback, and those are limited to, excuse me, those aspects of the wall that are over the three feet height limit, and then the patio cover structure. Those were essentially the only elements of the project that were technically encroaching into the front yard setback. We also reviewed the project for parking, traffic trips and generation, historic resources, and signs and signage. The parking, as you see in the staff report, we kind of approached that from a couple different ways in the code or aspects in the code, and found that the most applicable was a variance application because of the surrounding buildings in the area, really all built out to the front yard setback. So it's rare when staff can come to grips with the findings for a variance, but in this case, it truly does lack some of the benefits that the other properties in the immediate vicinity enjoy. With that, I'll just wrap up the staff report and take any questions you might have. I know the applicants here, and they're probably willing or interested in making a presentation too.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff on this?
I have one. In the staff report, there, I'm sorry, this is in the resolution, the proposed resolution, there's discussion of the general plan and the downtown commercial land and all. I have been through the general plan and the housing element, and I find that we have design guidelines for the arcade, for the Arcade Plaza, for the East End, and then there's something in the, I think it was in the housing element, called the Town Center, which encompassed part of the arcade and encompassed the property in question here, but I could not find any design guidelines for the Town Center, per se. I was, we became sensitized to that, as you know, and so I have all the other design guidelines here, but I could not find any that specifically apply to this property. It's not Arcade, it's not Arcade Plaza, it's clearly not East End, and so I'm not sure what kind of design guidelines we should be working around or guidance from council or what. So I'd appreciate some clarity there.
Commissioner Quilisi, we're not aware that said Town Center guidelines exist.
I couldn't find any, yeah.
None have been adopted by the City Council, although it may be the case that the authorization to do so exists in the general plan, but the council has not done so. As you've noted, the only council adopted design guidelines that exist are the Arcade Design Guidelines, the Arcade Plaza Design Guidelines, and the East End Guidelines. None of those three applies to this property. The other ones worth considering, of course, are the Transit Corridor Overlay Element, Special Overlay Zone, which was considered because this is on a state highway, along with the generic rather specific design standards in the Designer View Permit section of the code.
Okay.
Commissioner Nolan?
Question for staff. I read the historic report, and, but then I also noticed the comment on page five of five at the beginning, and this is in regards to historic structures. And we did receive via email a request for, from a Historic Preservation member, that this project go or be referred to their commission, and I'm just asking this as kind of a reference, and I know we've had this come up on some other projects, but could you explain, oh, this might be some of that information, something else. Could you explain the process by which a project would go to Historic Preservation before us, Historic Commission before us?
Happy to do so. A project is required to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission and approved by that commission through a work permit if the project is a designated landmark or a designated historic district. In both of those cases, the word designated means designated by the City Council upon recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission through a prescribed process. The other term that I believe was referenced in the email, which is a public record to the Planning Commission, is Site of Merit, also known as Structure of Merit. Those are a different type of property. Those are a list of properties that were recommended some years ago by the HPC. However, the City Council never adopted the list of quote "recommended" structures of merit, which would be under Ojai Municipal Code Section 4813. Because they were never adopted by the City Council, that list has no official bearing. It becomes part of the many pieces of information considered by the city in evaluating historic issues, but it itself has no official meaning, because the City Council did not adopt that list of structures when they considered the matter some years ago. City Council retains the power to designate a structure of merit under Section 4813. However, Section 4813 Subsection B provides that even if designated by the City Council, no additional review or requirements apply to a structure of merit. So even if they had been designated on the current list, it still would not adopt an additional review requirement.
No restrictions.
There are, in short, no restrictions. The only Historic Preservation Review requirements are on designated landmarks and designated historic districts, properties within a designated historic district, of which we have one, the Tarmina Area. Lastly, worth pointing out is in a different section of the code, 4805 Subsection P, which provides, and I'll quote for clarity, "At the request of the council or planning commission, the HPC's powers include review proposed zoning amendments, applications for special use permits, or applications for zoning variances that affect proposed or designated landmarks and historic districts." Again, tying it back to that designated landmarks and designated historic districts. This property is not within those categories. Happy to answer any further questions on that?
Sure.
Oh, I believe Commissioner Isabella has a question, so perhaps we'll take her question first.
Can you, so I understand what you're saying in terms of city process and code, but can you speak to CEQA on this matter, because CEQA's not silent on whether it's designated or not, correct?
Right. CEQA contends, or CEQA, the CEQA process requires evaluating the potential impact to historic resource, which doesn't require designation. It is a question of, is it sufficiently historic to qualify as a historic resource? Generally, that asks, is it at least 50 years old, and does it have some merit, applying the federal, state, and local standards, even if not officially designated? As discussed in rather, in greater detail in Historic Resources Report, that analysis was concluded, and as I understand it, the historian has concluded that the project, as mitigated through the application of the Secretary of the Interior standards, will not have a significant impact on the potentially historic resource that is this 90-some-old building. Do you want to add anything to that one?
You have a question?
On CEQA. A brief overview.
Let me just break you in for a minute. So we were just handed a, what I presume is a revised set of conditions? What's the story on that?
Revised Proposed Resolution.
Mr. Chair, we, there is some confusion in the requirement potentially for a condition use permit. So CUP findings were included in the resolution. We went back and later realized that a CUP is not required for the project. So simply the CUP findings, and only the CUP findings were removed.
So they were removed?
Yes.
There's no additional stuff?
No additional new revisions, other than the removal of those findings.
Thank you. So Commissioner Corbin, you have a question?
Yeah, I have some questions for staff. We talk about parking more than almost anything else, and I have some questions about the parking component on this project. I want to know when the parking requirements were developed, and I want to know, it's hard for me to understand if they're saying that people have not been required to have parking after the parking requirements were developed or before the parking requirements were developed. I also understand that there is a fee for in-lu parking, and that comes up in another project that we're reviewing today, and the fee is something like $64, $45, that's $64, $100 per parking space. And so my question is this, if in fact you have to pay that parking fee or fine, or I'm not quite sure what that is, where does that money go, and does it actually go to something that relieves parking? So I feel like I need more information about that component before I can really make a decision about this. And if in fact we decide that it's unjust to make them pay the parking fee, how can we say anybody has to pay the parking fee? There's 111 people who will potentially occupy this space on every, any given day, and we're saying that they don't have to have parking, whereas in the project that we will discuss later, there's potentially four cars that may show up sometime or not, and they are required to pay over $25,000 for parking mitigation. Now, I don't understand what that's for. If it's for maintaining the parking lots, well, if it's for overnight parking, I don't think you're allowed to park in the parking lots overnight. If in fact we're going to say we need some help with parking in town, I'm not sure that we do, I'd like to know that that money is actually earmarked for something helpful and there's a plan for it. So if you can give me some more information about that, I might be able to make a better decision about this.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know exactly when the initial city zoning ordinance was adopted that contained parking requirements, but it was certainly well after this particular building was constructed. And this building, as Mr. Higgins indicated, is similar to the other buildings that are adjacent and to the west of this building on Ojai Avenue, which are also nonconforming as to parking, and those are unique in the sense that they actually come out to the public right of way, and we feel that that's the basis for the zone ordinance approval in this case. We did look at the application of in-lu fees in this particular case, but we felt that because of the characteristics of this lot, that it is adjacent to other buildings that are also nonconforming with respect to parking, that are, that basically are extended out to the public right of way, that that, the findings for the zone variance could be used here. So this is a long nonconforming situation with respect to this building. The purpose of the in-lu fee is to be placed into a fund to create new parking facilities, not to maintain existing ones, but to create new parking facilities. To my knowledge, the city hasn't developed a plan for new parking facilities, but presumably once some amount of funds have been procured, then there would be a programming as part of that.
Well, wouldn't it be fair if in fact that is for new parking fees, if everybody participated in some format instead of targeting certain people who have to pay a huge amount of money in relation to what they're getting?
Well, the difference is, in some cases, there, a property already has parking, perhaps sufficient parking, they want to make an addition or change the use to something that requires more parking. In this case, the situation is that this building is already nonconforming. So that's the difference.
Does that make sense to you, Bobby?
Doesn't compute for me. I mean, I understand technically and a legal sense how you can argue that, but it really doesn't make sense.
It's not, it's not fair.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? I'm going to open the public hearing, and could we hear from the owner?
Or the applicant?
Or the applicant, I guess.
Applicant first.
Thank you.
I think we both have a shot here.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff.
It's great to see you back here.
And thank you for being here in lieu of the circumstances. We really appreciate that. I think probably I can best serve my purpose here by giving you a little background, architecturally what's going on. So Jeremy, you want to light up the screen there? And this is just simply plans of what you have in front of you, but for the sake of public, well, we'll start there. Okay. Okay, so what you're looking at is the 1920s version of the structure that we're working on right now, looking at altering tonight for the purpose of Topa Topa Brewing Company. Doesn't look much like that now. There's, however, the general front facade is fairly intact, as it is. Obviously, the gas pump portico is no longer there. There are openings that simulate to some degree what's there already, although as you see, maybe I can jump to the present here. You can see how the portico has been removed, and the large openings, you know, this was a garage, this was a gas station garage, as you probably all figured out. Those access doors were filled in with large windows in place of that, and the wall from the foundation up to the sill was infilled with plaster. Looking at this and relating it back to the original, it's a little difficult, but those windows that flank the two large windows, I believe those openings were there, but in the time from the original, the windows have obviously been changed out. They're aluminum mullions, and most likely back in the 20s, they were still. And that's pretty typical of a large part of this whole building in terms of the materials for the windows. Let's take another look back at that original. So before I get into what we're proposing here, you can see the ingress and egress driveways existing in the original, so they could get into the gas pumps and leave through Montgomery's side of the street. And as we, other way, they're still there, and in fact, people, as you know, living here, typically come in, maybe there's one or two cars parked there, drive in, drive out, they're only there for a short time. And our plan, if I can get this right, there's a front elevation of the proposal. We have extended the curbing and eliminated those driveways. Obviously, they wouldn't be needed in this proposed front patio configuration, and at the same time have modified the crosswalk access, and I think I maybe should have something, maybe this kind of helps a little bit here, to be more in alignment with the crosswalk as you go from the corner across Montgomery easterly. You also notice that a big intent of this project is to promote walkability in the neighborhood, and try to actually, you know, this kind of goes back to Mr. Corbin's comment on parking, because it certainly is an issue in the city. But the fact that we can mitigate the amount of cars by walking and bicycles is a huge thing for the city, and I know that Complete Streets has been looking at this for years and has done a good job of following through on that, and we are obviously aware of that fact and think it's a great idea, and we need to go there. This is the way of new urban planning. We're minimizing autocentricity in favor of walkability by people, locals using this place, as well as people coming into town. Hence, you see that bicycle rack there, and, you know, obviously it's conceptual, but there could be up to 12 bikes there in that one, and we've actually put forth another proposal for maybe adopting a, if necessary or desirable, a parking space on Montgomery there to develop even more bicycle stationing, so. So that's what the idea is, that's what's going on there. So you're looking at a outdoor patio. We've taken the, those doors, they're actually now our storefront windows, which were originally doors, we turned them back to more of their original intent as doors. These are roll-up doors, and the idea was kind of throw a little bit of homage back to what the structure originally was, actually. And that's how I came up with the idea of that shade structure. Originally, I had it on the east side of that facade to match the original portico of the gas station. And then, as we were looking at it with the owners and team, we realized that it made more sense to put it up against the adjacent building to the wall. the adjacent building to the west to open up the area for light and viewing, it's, the sightlines, both from going east and west and on the highway there, and also from the interior of the courtyard as well. So, it just made more sense to do that. But there actually was, besides the idea of providing a shade structure, and it's a lightweight shade structure. It's, it's fabric cloth with a couple of steel columns. That's what the intent of us, because we know how hot it can get in Ojai, and we just wanted to provide some relief in that, in that sense. So, that's what that's about. So, as we proceed, there, I think, in terms of the exterior, those are the significant changes. You can look on the Montgomery side rendering and see a large window there. And that is, that's an east-facing window there. There are existing windows there. We are, we may consider making it smaller, but the idea was, again, just to open up and bring light into the space, which, for natural daylighting, things of that nature. To do what we can, you know, to mitigate energy usage and also just for the general aesthetics of the building itself. So, that's the intent of that. I don't have a picture of the original on that, because I don't think we're going to see it here now, because it's around the corner. But I believe it's in the HPC, I mean, not the HPC, but the findings by Buena. They have a photograph of that, of that Montgomery side street. And it also has been altered over the years. In fact, if you look at that picture, it's page five of the report, you'll see that it looks like there was doorways going out of there. And initially, there was only plaster returning in a certain way before they did the greater extent of it. So, we're kind, basically, going into that area that's been already modified and proposing putting this glass window in there. Let's see. So, cruise through here. That's, that's actually the eastern elevation of it. There's our site plan, and that gives you an idea of the layout of the front patio. And you can see the dash line adjacent to the sidewalk, just inside the curb line of the street there on, on the right side there, dash line. That represents the property line. And so, we're scooting off of that, basically, with a little bit of landscape, just to soften the hardness of the plaster. That's, that wall's about three and a half feet tall, just to provide a little, more, more of a pedestrian barrier than anything and to also enhance the aesthetics of the building. People would be entering, customers would be entering through that gateway there, which is in a direct alignment with the front. There is a door actually going in. So, during the winter months, obviously, when the, when those large roll-ups are, whatever they end up being, are in closed position, they have access to the building straight on there. In this relationship, you can see also where the, how the bicycles relate to this existing sidewalk. They're out of the, they're out of the public right-of-way at that point. And you're also visualizing the, or we're also looking at the reconfigured or modified sidewalk ADA access there. So, there's, there's some tweaking that needs to happen, but we're trying to be cognizant of as much of the details we can in regards to the facade, because, quite honestly, we realize the significance of a building like this and appreciate the fact that it does have history. But also know that it can be enhanced far greater than what it is now in terms of not only aesthetics, but in use. So, based on that, maybe I should, would like to invite Jack up. Jack, do you want to add any?
Sure. I know we have some people here for public comments that come after. Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want to step on any of these tips. Thanks, Steve.
So, I know you had...
I have some of these in case. I don't think I brought enough of these for everyone, but...
I'm going to go back to the back there.
That looks good.
So, that takes you forward, that takes you back.
Thanks.
If you need to.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, for having us here tonight again. We're hoping that we can answer any questions that you guys have. And first and foremost, want to wish everyone well, that everyone made it through the fires. And please, give our best to Commissioner Powers. I think he did lose his home, I heard, so hopefully, we can help him recover. But, yeah, we're really here, and some of our supporters are here, to answer any questions you guys have about the use. We did just put up a little brief presentation in case you wanted to get to know Topa Topa a little bit more than you might already, already have heard of us. But we've been trying to, trying to do something here in Ojai for quite some time. Some of the slides in here give you a background on who we are as the owners and principals of the company. Myself live here in Ojai on Eliso Street. My business partner, Kyle, in the back there with his kids, lives here in Miners Oaks as well. So, we are Ojai residents and not outsiders trying to come in and, and do something. We've always wanted to do everything here. We actually tried to start our whole brewery here, but that didn't happen that way. So, we're really, really excited about this project. I know there are always concerns when you're making improvements or changes in the downtown corridor. We worked with Steve and his team to come up with what we think is just a really, really fantastic design for that space. It serves our purposes, and more importantly, I think, serves the community really well. Some of the highlights for, for us are really removing what I think a lot of people in the community consider to be a fairly dangerous corner there with cars pulling kind of directly across the sidewalk to park. And what, I don't know if anyone really knows if it's legal parking or illegal parking. I know the laundromat, or the dry cleaner owners spend a lot of time kind of kicking people out of there, so their customers can serve. So, that, that was a big part of the plan for the patio in the front. A big part of what we try and do in any of our taprooms, we do have a taproom in Ventura where we manufacture all the beer, as well as a taproom in Santa Barbara, is try and promote people walking and biking to our location. That's where we're sacrificing some, you know, fairly valuable retail space there that we could have as a patio for what we think is, is the betterment of the downtown corridor. I ride my bike downtown all the time, and I'm always amazed that there's not as many places to lock it up as I would like. So, we've been attending some of the Complete Streets meetings, and we're really willing and able to work on, continue to work towards any projects to get more bike parking in downtown. We were able to successfully do that at our location in Santa Barbara. I think I spoke a little bit about that last time we were here, where we actually worked with the city and a few surrounding businesses to occupy a parking space on the street at our Funkson location there to do a row of bike parking. It's been tremendously popular with our customers and the other customers for other surrounding businesses as well. So, we'd love to duplicate that here as well, so. But, yeah, our design, you know, we were very, we tried to make it blend in as much as possible to the arcade and the surrounding buildings. They, they kind of looked like all one big building, so we kept our color palettes kind of in mind with that. And think, yeah, Stephen and his team just did a really, really, really great job, so. One of the things I always like to highlight, not only with Kyle and I and our third business partner, Casey, who is, he makes all the beer, so, is that, you know, Casey also grew up in the region. He's from UCSB, went to UCSB College. So, we're all kind of really proud to have our business here in, in the region. Topa Topa, obviously, you can see them from all over town. We think it fits in really well with, with downtown to serve the locals who are here, as well as the tourists who are already here. The way we have it set up is with our two other taprooms, we're certainly not a tourist-based business, because people, tourists would have to drive right by two of our other locations to come here. So, we don't think that's going to happen too, too much. But we do think that our, our business and our plan, being in the center of town here, can serve as an important kind of community hub for locals and tourists alike. So, that's really what we try and get behind. We do a whole lot of supporting of local nonprofits. We're 1% of the Planet Company. We actually tabulated it up for part of this presentation, the amount and of money that we've given away. And it's kind of hurts to Kyle and I sometimes to actually see it. In just two short years, we've given away over $40,000 to the likes of the Ojai Valley Conservan, Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, Ojai Valley Defense Fund. We were part of supporting the skate park and some of the lighting plans that are coming in there. So, we really try and get behind things that, that we believe in, but also, more importantly, what our customers and, and what they believe in in town. So, each of our taprooms kind of takes on a little bit of the vibe of the town that it, it's based in. And, you know, we don't think there's any better place for Topa Topa to be than in the shadow of the Topa Topa Mountains in our hometown of Ojai, so. I'm happy to field any questions or concerns that you guys might have about Topa Topa.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Anybody have any questions for the owner? Yes, Kathy?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. And one of them has to do with the potential of this property ever being landmarked. And the only two comments that I saw, if I read this correctly, and I, if I didn't, please, somebody correct me. But it sounded like one of the issues, not, it's not an issue, it was just an item. And this would be on the historic report, page nine of 10, which is attachment F on page 12 of 15, number six. The response to number six was, it says, "The project calls for the replacement of the existing wood louvert attic vent on the northern elevation with terracotta barrel tiles. The preferred approach would be to repair this historic feature or replace it in kind." Is that something you considered, or maybe you can comment on that?
I think when we looked at, when we talked about the venting up there, one, I think it's just fairly damaged. And, and, and I know, I was in there today, and you can kind of just see, just leaks right to the outside. So, it's something that we would be open to amending if that would appease, appease someone, I think. And one of the reasons I think we tied in was a little bit of color guidelines that we looked at from the design. Steve might be able to speak to it.
Exactly. I mean, it was strictly aesthetics. We didn't think it would be an issue in its, in its current state. We thought we could throw some terracotta up there and create a little more interesting architectural feature. I think ultimately, it's not a, something that we have to have, but that'd be up to the commission to determine, I suppose.
Good. And then, I have a couple more. And the other one was same document, attachment F. This is on page 13 of 15. Or it says page 10 of 10. Well, it's a little confusing. But anyway, this would be number, item number 10. And that had to do with the attachment points of the low wall and the patio covered. Since it's minimized by this design, so I guess my only comments would be, apparently, the patio cover is attached to the, to the face of the building?
Correct. On that one side.
Did you, did you ever explore having it not attached? And could that, could it work? I know it's a tight space.
Well, of course, we looked at it.
Yeah.
This is a, considered a lightweight structure.
Okay.
Okay. And the attachment at the building would be, would have a very insignificant impact structurally on the existing facade. We're talking of a couple bolts that would be extracted and then patched.
Okay.
That's about it. I know there was a concern by an HPC member that...
Right, and that's kind of where I was looking at this.
That it could create structural, you know, issues. But it's not like that. It's a very lightweight structure, easily disassembled if necessary.
Okay. And then, the other one was the wall. And I'm guessing that the wall, the low wall, is attached to the building or comes right up to it?
You know, we haven't got to that detail yet. We could create a space between it if you, if you wanted to create a control joint, let's say, of a half inch or something. I mean, it doesn't matter. It doesn't have to attach physically. In fact, it's probably preferable not to, just for purposes of structural, you know, spalding of plaster and that sort of thing. So, yeah, we could put a control joint in there.
Just curious about that. And this is a very minor thing. And this, I know you're not required to do a landscape plan, but I know you included one. And I noticed that the plant is, well, I'll use the common term, Boston ivy. And it's a vine, and it's, tends to be, its growing habit is that it's very close, and it actually like attaches to the wall, which is okay. And I'm not sure if that was your intention, but I guess where I'm going with that is that you're probably going to have a big open space with nothing in it once it starts growing. So, you might want to add some more plants in there.
Okay.
Very minor.
Yeah, we took it off, we cued off the nest across the street, because they also have a little barrier wall as you enter their courtyard. And they have, but their planting is on the inside of the courtyard, not on the outside.
Okay.
So, it was the same plant.
But I just wanted to mention that.
Sure.
And then, I do want to say, first of all, I really thank the owners. They've been participating in Complete Streets. They've come to the meetings, they're getting the emails. And I appreciate their involvement with the community. I just, I think that's really important. But I'm, I'm definitely in favor of your bike parking. And I know that, I believe you're talking with the Public Works Department about possibly losing the one parking space right around the corner on Montgomery and turning that into bike parking. And as a Commissioner and Chair of the Complete Streets, I wanted to say that I'm in favor of that. Of course, you'll have to do a little more exploring to make sure it's going to work or could possibly work. But I wanted to mention that. And then, otherwise, I, I think it's a good project.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Quilce?
Thank you, sir. I'd like, as the other Commissioner that's on the Complete Streets Committee, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Nolan has said about the bike parking. I think that's great. And overall, the project, I think, still conveys the sense of the original building without looking like a garage with gas pumps out front. And that's all to the good, as far as I'm concerned. One thing that does concern me about this, as I, as I walk either side of Ojai Avenue through the center of town there, I see facades like this. I see terracotta tile, and I see dark wood. And we just had a project across the street from this at 334 East Ojai Avenue, where they, they wound up constructing pergolas of some sort with dark wood, not with black painted metal. And I'm, I'm wondering how you came to decide to have metal posts there rather than wood like we have in the rest of the downtown corridor?
It's a good question. I think what drove this was the fact of it originally being a garage, a mechanic's garage. And if you look at those photos, I believe you can see remnants of steel around the perimeters and, and the use of it. And that's, so basically, that's, that's what, what kind of drove this idea that, you know, it's a garage, let's put some metal in there, you know?
And the roll-up doors?
Yeah, those are glass doors. Those are actually glass doors that, but they will be either roll-up or, you know, somehow, they will definitely be operable.
And we'd be open to alternative, you know, you can order those roll-up doors in a number of different materials. You know, we, we had, we were just have experience with those doors from some of our other locations.
I haven't seen an illustration with the doors closed, I guess. So, I'm not sure really what it would look like. My concern was more with the use of the metal structure rather than a wood structure, which is more of the mission revival or whatever you want to call it.
Well, originally, we had...
Be consistent with downtown.
Okay. Originally, we had plaster columns in there at our concept review, which were wider, and then it was commented that we should thin them down.
Right.
So, it was at that point that we removed the plaster columns and went to the steel columns. Those are probably...
Left the steel core.
Six-inch, eight-inch square tube steel. And it was, the idea is just to pick up the trim around the doors and that sort of thing, because for sake of authenticity, we're looking at metal, you know, or steel-like window mullions, that sort of thing, to reflect the original building.
One of the things that we've revealed, because they've already started to take some of the, they've started to do some of the interior and kind of strip out. There actually is a steel beam, it is part of the building inside, so it's not exposed to the exterior. So, it's kind of carrying what's already in the building, a little bit to the outside, too. But really, our idea, once we, once we, the ballisters and the, and the stucco beams were recommended by, by planning to kind of thin those down, the really, we wanted these, these, these posts to just kind of disappear and just not, not, you know, hopefully, they're as small as possible, and steel is the right, the right thing for us to use to make that happen.
There's a structural component there, too, that, to use steel on that corner, so.
Rather than wood.
Right.
They kind of stand out, painted dark like that. If you want them to disappear, maybe the same color as the... the same color as the covering and the building would make them disappear better. I understand your reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, Fiona?
Since you're changing the use, have you evaluated or have a method to evaluate the property for, you know, putting food and drink next to what was a dry cleaning establishment? Have you assessed--
Environmentally?
Well, just the safety of that, yeah. I mean--
We haven't got that deep into it yet. We're, our next step would be environmental health with this. The model, of course, is Topa Topa Brewing's existing store and our taproom in Santa Barbara, where they have that same situation. They took an old industrial building. That whole area is known, in Santa Barbara, as the funk zone. It's a, they've taken something that was basically blighted, and has become a center hub for activity and social gathering. And it's a pretty amazing concept, what they've done there. So, that's what we're modeling off of, that aspect of it. We don't anticipate any environmental issues there.
It's part of, there's a couple, a couple of things to address that specifically is, part of the base building deliverable to us, from our landlord, there is to deliver us a warm, usable shell. So, any mitigation that she would have had to done from chemicals that she used or anything is done already, when she removed all of her equipment, which is fairly self-contained. I didn't, I didn't know that. That was one of our first concerns when we, when we looked into it. So, that's already all happened. From a purely environmental health, the county health department standpoint, our taproom business is actually exempt. Brewers and wineries are exempt as our type 23 license. So, it's kind of a funny process. You actually have to apply, and then they deny you. But that's part of, for our section. Now, the kitchen section will have to be brought up to environmental health. We have all those guidelines and are ready to construct in such a manner that needs it. But it really has to do with floor coatings, base coves, you know, and protection on the walls up to a certain, certain level, hand sinks, those types, all things that we can put in to the building that shouldn't be a problem.
Good. Thank you very much. I have a number of speakers' cards here, so I'm hoping to get through all the speakers.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you. I have a speaker's card here from Rob Russell.
Hey, how's it going? I, sorry, my address, 1674 Ladera Road. And I'm not going to say anything groundbreaking. It's kind of just echoing a lot of what's already been said. And really, it's partially a response to a lot of the comments from the last City Planning Commission, which I attended. But yeah, really, whenever I go to the existing tasting rooms in Ventura and Santa Barbara, there's kids, there's dogs, there's families, there's kids playing Jenga as their parents are, you know, happily having conversation. And I mean, they brought a lot of kids here with them, too, representing Topa Topa. So, it's definitely a family-oriented business. And it's not really surprising to me. These guys are super community-oriented. As Jack mentioned, the dream was originally to have the whole business be in Ohai. So, their hearts are definitely here. I don't actually think they would even bother trying to do this if they thought it would have any negative impact on the community. And as far as the parking issue that is brought up so frequently, I really think if you're willing to walk a block, there's the park and ride, and there's all the parking where Farmer's Market is and behind the arcade. So, I think that it's, I don't know. Obviously, I'm not as well-informed as all of you, but it doesn't seem like as big of an issue as it's made out to be. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure how to pronounce his name. Elise DePuit? DePuit, thank you.
Elise DePuit, Ohai. Well, I'm very pleased to see this historic building being redeveloped and done in such a beautiful, beautiful way. But I have a couple of concerns. I'll get the parking concern issue over first. I wondered, is, what's going to happen with the pickup and takeout of the customers for the cleaners in regard to parking? Are some of the parking spots on Montgomery going to be converted, like, to 20-minute parking? Or is there some other plan for that? Or, that's one question I have, because we could possibly lose some parking spots along there. And then, it's great that they are thinking of bicycles and walking. It's great. But the reality of the situation there is the parking on South Montgomery is just horrendous. And now, we're adding two new restaurants right across from each other in that same corner. And the Emporium has its own parking, and that's always way full. And there's just, I don't, you know, with the events at the art center, the city really needs to address parking on South Montgomery. And this is just going to add problems to it, too. So, I just think it's something the city really needs to address at some point. And I know some people are talking about that parking lot, or that lot next to the art center as a possible location. So, just get that over with. I understand from Mr. Summers that you're not required to have the HPC review this project. And also, that, anyway, I'm getting a little confused. Sorry. I just think that it would be good if you had the HPC review the project. This building, as you know, has been on many lists since 1986 as a potential historic site. And the reasons I ask for this is that the Secretary of Interior Standards, number six, according to the historic report, they say, "Features shall be repaired rather than replaced. If severely deteriorated, the new feature should match the old in design, color, and texture." So, he already said that he'd be willing to change the vent to bring it to the way it was. And then, I also have questions about the color and the style of the windows and the, and the, what do you call it?
I don't know what they're calling it, a trellis or something.
The shade.
Yeah.
So, as Mr. Quilicey said, that it sort of doesn't fit in with the dark metal. So, I have a question about that. And also, the historic report was paid for by the applicant. So, there's always a potential that any decision on things would be skewed in their favor. And these are just reasons I think it would behoove the city to have these finer details looked at by the Historic Preservation Commission. And I also wonder, has the owner of the building been approached about the Mills Act and what benefits the owners could get by following through and making it a designated landmark? And one thing I do like, I don't know how to say this word, but I like the way they have the palusters on the wall that match the ones on the Mission parapet. I think that's really great. So, on page nine of the historic report, they say, "The building played no identifiable important role in the development of Ohai." And I'm glad the architect appreciates the historic value of it. And, I mean, it was one of the first service stations in Ohai, and it's definitely the oldest one we still have in town. So, I think it is an important building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DePuit. I have a card here from, I'm not sure about this word, Maru Van Aker? Sorry.
Thank you. I'd just like to lend my support to the owners and the company of the Topa Topa Brewing Company. Over the years, I've attended several events that they've hosted for community organizations, such as the Surf Rider Foundation and other nonprofits in their tasting rooms. I think it's super valuable to build community. We often, my family will often ride bikes from Miners Oaks into downtown using the bike path. And we often find that there aren't enough parking spots for the bikes, or, so I really, really encourage the council to approve this plan to support more bicycle riding. When you go into the tasting rooms, what you'll see is a lot of families, young families like mine, playing games, Battleship checkers and all this, while we're enjoying their tasty beverages. And just want, that's about it. Just wanted to lend my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a card here from Bill Lower. Lower, sorry?
Bill Lower. I live on Shippey Lane.
Thank you, Bill.
I want to endorse the idea of the pub there as well. There are many of my friends who are anxious to see this thing in place and to enjoy that facility. I also want to reiterate something that was kind of touched on here, and that I think there's an improvement in the parking, because I'm sure many of you have parked at that dry cleaner by pulling across one lane of traffic and then awkwardly scrambling across another lane of traffic to make what amounts to an illegal turn. So, in discussing the traffic and parking consequences of this, I think there's a, there's an improvement right in that immediate area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lower. Megan Pemberton?
Hi, my name's Megan. I live in Ohai. Also, here to support the Topa Topa Brewing. I'm a mom. I have small kids. I think a lot of people are hearing that. I actually did have a question, though, for Mr., or, sorry, okay. I'm just curious, how much is in the parking fund?
Oh, I don't know that we know. It's, it's how much? Mr. Summers might be able to--
The number I can give you to the nearest six figures is about $100,000. I don't have the exact numbers. That would be available from the Finance Director. And that's been accumulated over time from a number of projects that the city is in the process of looking at in the course of the next fiscal year's budget, which starts in, the council start looking at that later in the first half of next year, evaluating what to do with those funds.
Okay. So, I was just curious, because, yeah, I just didn't know. And then, also, I also just wanted to say that the Topa Topa does a lot of local fundraising. And I was just down there volunteering for victims of the Thomas fire. So, I think that it's important to, you know, to think about what they're doing for the community. And also to think in, like, for me, like I said, my husband grew up here. We have small children. And just thinking about how we're going to get, I mean, I talk to my friends who grew up here, and they want to come back, and they want to come back to Ohai that's vibrant and that's awesome, you know, a really neat place for young families to be. And when I talk to them, it's, I struggle every, I don't struggle, but it's always kind of the argument that I make with them, or just pleading with them to come look at Ohai again. In, you know, it's a great place for families, and it's because businesses like these. And so, I think, just thinking of the future of Ohai, too, that's something that I think of, and a place that I hope my kids want to live in, you know? I want to be close to my grandkids, if they have them. So, just thinking forward and being an advocate for small businesses, for family-run businesses, and not, you know, and, you know, I actually agree with Elise a lot. I also am a docent at the museum. She actually trained me. And so, I definitely appreciate, you know, the need to maintain the historical look of the town. But I also can appreciate not wanting to throw up, you know, boundaries to keep businesses like this, that are so awesome, out of town. So, anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a card here from Paul Hibler.
Hi. My name's Paul. I'm a fairly new resident and homeowner to Ohai. We bought the crazy house up on the hill with the climbing gym, but I didn't put it there. So, I'm, I also happen to be a restaurateur, and I've met with the Topa Topa people. And I actually am a, I sell their beer in my, some of my restaurants. And of relevance sake, the craft beer industry is exploding across, especially Southern California. And Topa Topa is one of the best in class. So, you have a hometown hero here that you can plant right, kind of in the middle of town. I've also worked on a couple adaptive reuse projects of my own in downtown LA, LA, and the Noha Arts District. And this looks like a beautiful building that will blend in and add something really special to the community. So, I'm just here to endorse it, and put my support behind it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Chad Caldwell?
Good evening, council. My name's Chad Caldwell. I'm a resident of Ohai, have been since 2012. I'm just here in support of the project. My office is in Ventura. I've been fortunate enough to watch them turn pretty much an obsolete building in Ventura into a thriving, community gathering, you know, flourishing business, and all the while contributing to, you know, nonprofits, 1% for the planet, things like that. And would love to see something like this come up here. And just two things on the design. I love how they create that patio that makes that corner so much more usable. And we're fortunate to live in a spot where we can have sort of seamless indoor/outdoor dining. And I think those roll-up doors really do that well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a card here for Griffin Barkley.
Hi there. How you guys doing? My name's Griffin Barkley. I'm a resident of Ohai. Went to high school here in Ohai. I lived in Ventura for 10 years, but moved my family of five, three kids, up to Ohai just about a year ago. I recognize that discussing a brewery in the midst of somewhat disastrous times here, it seems a little weird. But I'm here to show my support for Topa Topa Brewing Company. I frequent Topa Topa quite often. My waistline doesn't love it, but I happen to go quite often. And I, if you've ever stepped foot in a Topa Topa, you'd understand the vibe, the community, the commitment to their employees, the commitment to the community at large, and local nonprofits is unwavering. And I happen to, I know that it's filled with people that love beer and love, love the community that they represent. So, they're, as Jack said, they've, they've supported local nonprofits like the Ohai Skate Park, Ohai Land Conservancy, 1% for the planet. And frankly, they don't need to do that. It just happens to be in their DNA. And that's something that I love, and I want to continue to support. So, my belief is that this committee should be begging a restaurant or a brewery like Topa Topa, come into the city and improve a building. And I think it's absolutely gorgeous, frankly. I think they've done a great job. And I just want to throw my, throw my support their way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This looks like Nigel, Nigel, I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name.
Chisholm.
Thank you.
I'm shocked that you don't know who I am. Nigel Chisholm. I own the Vine and the Jester. And I see Kerry here, so I don't know if you've got something on the agenda about that tonight. But just to prove it, if you don't mind. Jack is a fabulous member of this community. As a restaurateur in the downtown of one and a half restaurants, you'd expect me reasonably to say that I don't want him anywhere near my place. And this happens to be right across from the Vine. I can't wait to have Jack as a local business owner. He's exactly what this town needs. He's, he's all about community. He's all about helping everybody else. And in fact, when I had to do some work at the Jester, and asked for volunteers, he was down there in the morning, helping me pull out the old walk-in there, too. This town needs more people like Jack in it. I understand that there's a conversation about there's too many restaurants and bars and this, that, and the other in town. It's not the business, it's who owns the business. And if Jack was opening a Christmas card shop downtown, I'd be supporting him doing that as well. I ask you to look at the design. It's beautiful. It's a lot better than what's there right now. Obviously, you'll need to make changes, but it's the people that you're looking at, not just the business itself. So, Jack, I can't wait to have you across from my place, mate. All right. Thanks very much. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you very much. I have one here from John Weir. Thank you very much. I have one here from John Weir. Did I pronounce that right?
Weir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I speak on behalf of my wife and myself. We own Beacon Coffee Company here in town. And Jack's the reason we're here. We were supposed to go in on another property together two years ago. And so, in addition to this fulfilling, something that both Jack and I saw as very valuable 24 months ago, I'd also like to say that our parking lot has more parking than I need, in terms of every requirement that you all have of me and of our neighbors. So, if we're talking about charging him $100,000 for parking, I'll lease him all of the spots he needs for a dollar. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I believe this is the last one. Andrew McCully?
Hi, good evening. Andrew McCully. I'm a five-year resident of Ojai. Brought my family here. Followed my folks who retired here. My dad got sick, and we moved the family down to be closer. And I'm a 10-year employee at Direct Relief in Golita, which is a nonprofit. I direct our international programs and emergency response activities. And so, obviously, was happy to help during this last fire event here in Ojai, because I'm usually in Haiti or in Puerto Rico or other places. And I was just honored to work with Topa Topa this last weekend when they had a fundraiser for Direct Relief for the fires to support the community of Ventura and Ojai just last weekend. And I just think it speaks to their interest in supporting the local community and local nonprofits, although we're, you know, in Golita, but we are doing work in Ojai. And, you know, they don't have to do that, but I think it just speaks to their character as business owners and how they would operate here in Ojai as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe that's all the speakers' cards I have. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Kathy, you can come up and talk if you want.
[inaudible]
All right. Just saying, anybody that wants to talk on it. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, and we will discuss this here and see if we can come to a resolution. Steve, was there anything you wanted to respond to in terms of the comments people made?
You mean the public comments?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, perhaps, I think it's important that we address the HPC, you know, issues. And I believe most of those were answered with Kathleen's questions. And these are the ones, as they came forward from their representative. One is the attachment of the wall in what we call the shade structure. That attachment, which I believe we clarified that it's a lightweight structure. It's like few bolts. It could easily be removed. It's not a structural significant impact on the building. The second point B was made, alteration of the two tall, narrow windows on the front facade. And I believe he's referring to the, those two windows that flank the larger openings, the door openings. That was actually addressed in the HPC as an existing opening which we're leaving, but the windows in there, again, were aluminum mullions, which are not the original windows, and they have that foul look about them. And when we go back into that point, we would definitely go for authenticity with it and upgrade all that. So, there was that issue. There was the issue about the air vent that Kathleen brought up. That's your call. We can go either way on that. I'll just leave it at that. Then, the other issue was the creation of the larger window opening facing East Montgomery. The idea there is to give, like, I think I formally addressed, to let, allow light and visual connection from the inside of the building. So, that's the point of it. There's existing windows there that are kind of hodgepodge in, if you look at the configuration of them on the existing building. And they're not, they don't appear to be original. It's hard to say, but if you look at that one photograph from the '20s, it's definitely different. Then, there's a third point made where it's mentioned, requires measures be taken to ensure that work on the facade inside of the building doesn't damage the integrity of the brick and the integral structure of the building. Well, we're professionals, you know? As an architect, we hire professional engineers, structural engineers, and very aware of the nuances of going into these old buildings. And obviously, it would be a priority to us not to incapacitate the structural integrity of any building we work on. And this is no exception. So, I don't see that as being an issue whatsoever. I don't really understand, the last point was requires, he was recommending that they require the HPC oversee the remodel to ensure the Secretary of Interior standards are met. I think that was addressed by the city attorney to some degree. And I'm not qualified really to answer that. So, perhaps, if you would, Mr. Summers?
Through the chair, the, as we discussed earlier, and perhaps I wasn't as clear as I could be, the Planning Commission lacks the power to refer this project to the Historic Preservation Commission. That power lies solely with the City Council if the project is appealed. The Planning Commission is, of course, empowered under SEQA and under the city's codes to consider the historic impacts and historic issues as discussed in the reports and tonight. But referring the matter to the HPC or somehow setting up the HPC as the overseer is beyond the power of this commission. Thank you.
Thank you. So, lastly, I would just summarize that I think we're a lot closer to the original building as this design looks to you tonight versus where it currently exists in a lot of, looking at a lot of its features. And that, it's not that we're trying to duplicate what was there by any means, but at least show respect for our history and the character which these type of buildings bring to our downtown corridor. And that was the intent of this whole design. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Zabilla has a question for you. Steve?
What, what, and I don't know why I have to ask you this instead of someone from the HPC, but what is the, what's the change that they want made to the vent? What would be more in keeping, is it, is it?
To the vent itself?
Yeah.
In the parapet there? I believe it's just, it looks like it's a wood-louvered vent, just a simple, like you would see in just about any type of garage, and that's what it was. And we have designed in, we put, we made it an architectural feature. We integrated red terracotta tiles, and they call it barrel, where you stack them, offset them from one another to create a geometric pattern on it. If you were to zoom in on it, it's kind of hard to tell from that rendering. But it adds a nice, it's a nice architectural feature.
Still a vent, though?
Part, yeah, yeah. It would still function as the intent, intention of the original, for sure. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Thanks very much. And thank you, everybody, for...
Can I just say one more thing?
You may.
Very brief.
Well, first off, thank you for all the supporters. Thank you, guys. We really appreciate it. As small business owners, myself and Kyle, who's here, probably tending to the kids in the back there, I think we're happy to look at and modify certain things in our design to appease the powers that be. But I think what we really want is to be able to begin to move forward. You know, we're now probably four or five months into just this process, and this doesn't even get into kind of building and safety and all of that. For a small business like us, you know, we've already secured funding and financing. I think if we had known that some of these things could potentially drag on and on and on, we may, we very well might not have signed a lease on this building. You know, the parking issues and the potential to go to a historic review. We've worked really hard to try and get this to fit into all of those pieces of the puzzle, and also then fit into, you know, our SBA, Small Business Association, financing that we have in place. So, we're really, we're really happy and we're really excited to get to work on the project and get it, get it going. Right now, you know, the building's not looking too great for anybody, because it's, because it's empty. And we just want to see this, we don't want to see this be another blighted building, sitting empty in downtown Ojai. I think we have too many of those. So, we really look forward to your decision, and hopefully, we can, we can go and get to work, because we'll get this project done as fast as humanly possible. One, because we want to, but two, because we have to. Time is money, and we got it, we got to get moving on it. So, we really hope that you like the design. And if there's little, small tweaks that we need to make as we go along, we'd love to be able to do that, but do it in a process that we can kind of get moving, because we'd love to, I know Steve and the team is ready to, they're ready to submit some building, to building and safety for, for our permits. So, thank you, guys, so much. We really do appreciate it, and thanks to everyone who came out.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Do we have further discussion? I'm ready to make a motion, but I just...
I have a question of staff, if that's all right. With regard to the Secretary of the Interior Preservation Guidelines, or whatever that document is called, to oversimplify this maybe, is it saying we should keep this looking like a dry cleaners? Or is it saying we should revert to the original use as a garage? Or is anything in between, or something similar, still congruent with those guidelines?
Mr., Mr. Chair, the guidelines would apply if this were a historic landmark. And it would apply to the character-defining elements and any modifications to those elements that were identified in the landmarking. So, in the absence of that landmarking, the guidelines would not apply here. I think what's important to remember is that this structure has been modified over time. And even a, even a structure that is designated as a landmark can be altered. It can be modified, provided it's consistent with the, whatever criteria the city council has identified is in the, in the landmarking in terms of character-defining criteria and what have you. So, even if this were, this property were designated a landmark, the modifications that are before you this evening could be considered in that regard.
Okay. As far as buildings that have been modified over the years, I live in one, so I understand that part of it. And I have to say, it is not a blighted corner in downtown right now, but it is hardly one of the more attractive aspects of the central corridor. And I would be very happy to see something like this on that corner. So...
Thank you. Other comments before we...
I have a few comments.
Do you have comments?
Comments? When do I not have comments?
Comment carefully, is all I'm saying.
I want to commend everybody for coming out. It's so great to see this much engagement. It's an unusual thing for us. So, that's really good. It's always powerful, and I hope you will keep your eye on this commission, because there are many things that come before us that are very important, especially to the look of this downtown area. And without community support, sometimes we feel, some of us feel like we're voices in the wilderness, trying to uphold what we think is really special about the downtown area especially. Its historic nature is our brand. If you don't care about the history, the brand is important. It's what we sell here. And I, for one, think this is a really great riff on keeping what is true to the brand and the character of Ojai and adding, you know, some elements that are allowed, that make that shade structure, for instance, disappear more, that allow the building to be a living thing rather than something stuck in time. That said, I think our process for how we are reviewing these structures is extremely lacking. Yeah, you shouldn't get to a point where you're hearing at a design review permit, a design review meeting that, that, you know, the HPC has concerns. And we have to get off this idea that there are sites of merit or not sites of merit, and we have to come up with a comprehensive cohesive policy for how we deal with our historic buildings, whether they're commercial or they're residential, because, you know, we, we can lose what is great about Ojai very easily without people being watchdogs for the community. So, I really urge the members of the HPC, wherever they are, and other people, to really get a common-sense policy at the city, at the staff level for how we review these projects. It's the only way we're going to be able to keep downtown. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Anybody? Yeah. Mr. Corbin? Mr. Jagiello?
Sure. Well, I can't say enough positive things about this project as well. The design is just brilliant. I love the short, well, the wall for not only safety purposes, but also the usability, the community feel, the outdoor activity on that corner with the bike, with the, with the bike racks. It's, and the softened planter in the front, just those little elements really make it perfect. And I, and even the overhang, it's set into a corner, and it is really subtle the way it is right now. And even if it was black metal, I think it's still subtle, and it'll, it's just such a nice element. I love the, the windows imitating the garage door opening, and then I could see those open, and see that indoor/outdoor activity happening there in the corner. And that view out to the Montgomery, I mean, that's the view of the Topa Topas from the inside. So, you can't be Topa Topa Winery without a view of the Topa Topas. So, that's the direction you'd see that. So, and, and it, it seems timeless to me. It looks like it's always been there. Like, I'm looking at something that should have been there, and it's, and there it is. So, I can't say enough about that. Let's see, anything else? No, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Corbin, you had comments?
I agree. I think it's a great project. It's great company, and it'll certainly enhance the corner. My comments about parking have little to do with that. It has more to do with our consistency in how we look at projects and what the intention is of that parking fee that we charge. And while everybody gasps and says, oh, $100,000, for a larger commercial company, a $25,000 or $27,000 project for an individual is also daunting, especially when, I don't know where that money is. I don't know what we're doing with it. I also don't know if anybody's overseeing it, or if there's a plan, and there should be. If there's going to be a fee, it needs to be a reasonable fee, and there needs to be a reason to have it. And this project just brought that issue up strongly for me. I don't, you know, it's not, has, doesn't have anything to do really with that project other than that came up as an issue, and it is an issue. And I think it needs to be discussed, and I'm not sure what the right path is for that.
My understanding is there aren't any parking fees involved here. Is that correct? Thank you. If the variance is approved, yeah. Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone like to make a motion? Because these kids have to get to bed.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All right. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the City of Ojai for the approval of Design Review Permit, DRP 17-11, the variance, VAR 17-01, and the signed permit, S 17-21, for a change of use, partial building remodel, a beer tasting room, alcoholic beverage sales on site, a kitchen and front patio improvements at 345 East Ojai Avenue, assessors parcel number 023-0-100-230.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Nolan?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Quilosi?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Motion passed.
So, we're really looking forward to this project going forward. I don't know where I'm going to park when I go to get my takeout from Ojai Pizza. Maybe I'll just have to do it by bike. Okay.
Oh, yeah, buddy, on the vine is a great place.
But thank you all for, um, participating in this. All right, we're going to move on with our meeting here. I know, I was worried. So, our next item is, um, yeah.
Oh, I know. Oh, gotcha.
Our next item is a design review permit, DRP seventy dash thirteen, for the remodel of a single level home at two oh four Bald Street. We might recess, yeah. We will wait a moment. See who's really serious about being here.
Good evening. Um, my name's Nathan Turner and I've been living at two oh four Bald Streets since May.
You don't have to be here right now.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't opened the item yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought...
How could you hear? It's okay. Don't worry.
I'll let you know when it's time to come up.
I heard all kinds of stuff going on. Oh, I thought someone called, oh my gosh. Oh, okay.
A lot of chaos news.
Okay. We're going to start by hearing from staff regarding, um, two oh four Bald Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Uh, the project before is a design review permit, DRP seventeen thirteen, for the addition and remodel of a single level home in a VMU zone district at two oh four Bald Street. Um, we did our standard review of the project, uh, as it comports to the development standards of the VMU zone district, um, reviewed for non-conforming parking and structures. We can talk about that again. And other standard, um, review items for cultural, uh, uh, resource impacts, um, and design review findings. If we can answer any questions you might have about the project.
Do we have any questions for staff on this?
Just, just, Mr. Quilosi? Just for clarity, what we're talking about is a single family residence and the proposed change is to expand the footprint of that single family residence, but not to do any change of use. Is that correct?
Correct. The, uh, through the chair, uh, the use is the same, uh, additional square footage in the rear of the property. Um, the issue being, um, whether or not to require a second, um, covered parking space. And our routine with applicants in, in that regard is where would it go? How would it look? Um, and the design compatibility of a front loaded two car garage, um, on this street would render it potentially incompatible with the design review findings because no other, um, str- homes on the street have a two car front loaded garage.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Anybody? Okay. So, Mr. Turner, now it's your turn.
I was so excited the first time. Um, so, yeah, it, it's, it's a, a small charming nineteen thirties cottage, um, right in the middle of downtown Ojai. And the only thing we really wanted to do was just add a little bit of square footage. I don't want to change the look of it. I think that's the charm of it. I understand the garage situation. And, yeah, it would be probably nice to have two car garage, but I think that, I personally agree that it would look odd because it is such a small little cottage to, to have a bigger garage. Um, so, it is a pretty straightforward, um, I think Pat Nolan gave everybody the, did he give everyone?
We have, we have plans in our packet, yeah.
I can, if not, I can pass this one around. We just really want to keep the, we even want to keep the existing footprint is twenty-six wide. So, we're keeping that exact same width and then going out the back twenty-four, um, deep into the back of the lot. And I felt like that was a, a good amount because it gave a, a, a great sized master bedroom, a master bath. But the last thing I wanted to do was take away from the back garden area because there are fig trees and orange trees and all that stuff that is part of the reason I bought the house. And I want to keep them there. Um, that's about it. I don't even want to change the color. Just want to give it a fresh, fresh coat of white paint as well.
Great. Any questions for the owner? Thank you.
Okay.
Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this matter? All right, we will close the public hearing. Um, does the commission have any discussion items or... Chester, would you like to, you could make a motion, then we could discuss it.
Can I make a motion? Is that it? I'll make a motion to approve design review permit, DRP.
I'll make a motion to approve design review permit, DRP seventeen dash thirteen, for addition and remodel of a single level home in village mixed use zone, two oh four Bald Street.
Thank you. I'll second that. Mr. Quilosi seconds that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Nolan?
Yes.
Jagiello?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Quilosi?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Mr. Turner, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're on a roll now. We're moving through these things. Our next items are concept reviews. Um, item four is a concept review, CR seventeen oh six, for expansion of a conditional use permit to establish a one-room bed and breakfast using the, in, in the existing single family home at three ten East Eliso Street. And could we hear from staff on this item, please?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the project site, um, is a five thousand nine hundred and twenty-one square foot lot with an existing nine hundred and fifty square foot two-bedroom, one-bath single family residence, um, and a two hundred square foot, uh, detached garage. The property is bordered to the east by the, um, and north by the Sunito Inn, and to the west by a condominium development. The property was a subject of a recent minor use permit and design review permit exemption by the zoning administrator to allow one off-street parking space to be tandem parked. Subsequently, uh, more recently, the property was the, uh, subject of a CUP to establish, uh, B and B, uh, for, uh, and the additional parking demand associated with that project, one space was, um, accommodated with in-lu parking fees. Um, the, uh, various findings for the various approvals that you would need to make are in this, as is consistent with how we handle, uh, concept reviews. We don't get a, a lot of information in from the applicants. Um, we don't do, um, a ton of, uh, development standard review. Um, in this case, so we just, as is customary, we provide the findings that would need to be made. Um, we also, uh, looked at the definition of B and B and, uh, sort of raised the issue to you in the form of, um, of what's provided here in the staff report. The definition appears to, um, limit be, bed and breakfast to a single family home on a property with the residents for that property in the B and B structure. So, in, in, in this way, the definition doesn't appear to accommodate a detached B and B as well. So, that's the, the narrative, uh, that we provide in the, in the staff report, that a detached structure, um, doesn't appear to really meet the definition provided in the code for bed and breakfast.
Okay.
And with respect to parking, um, again, um, as, as, um, was discussed in the last item, uh, we, we didn't analyze, you know, uh, the, uh, an avenue for a variance here in this regard for, for, for parking because it wasn't, um, applied for specifically. Um, so another, another route obviously is in-lu fees and pursuant to the code for in-lu fees. There's a little section at the very end of that, uh, code that says if the in-lu fees, um, are, uh, somehow waived, that's a possibility that the city council, um, can waive in-lu fees. So, what staff provides is what's in the code. It would be in-lu fees unless waived by the, the city council.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Any, yes, Commissioner?
I think, um, the sighting of this house, um, is difficult. Uh, you know, I looked at that house when it was for sale before they built Sunito and it was a very different property. Um, and it is encroached upon by just about everything that's on it. And in order to add to that property, I think what's proposed is probably the nicest possible way to do it. I don't think it's going to impose on anything more than the condominiums and Sunito already imposes on every single lot that's already there. And it will at least provide some amount of privacy between the house and the piece in the back. And I think it's really a nice suggestion. Um, I do think that it would be nice to waive some of this parking fee because if in fact we don't, by the time she's done this project, she will have paid the city thirty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is an individual, one person. We just said a restaurant, a hundred and eleven seat restaurant that has three businesses that are very successful doesn't need to pay anything. There's something wrong with that. And I don't know what the legal way is or the proper procedure to deal with that, but that's a problem. If there's a hundred thousand dollars in that fund so far and she's going to pay thirty-two, over thirty-two thousand dollars, the proportions there just don't make sense. So, I think that needs to be addressed.
Okay. Anything else? Chester?
Well, I have to agree with that and I don't know what the solution is. Um, this in-lu parking comes up a lot. Parking is like probably, parking and water are the two top things and now it's fire.
We've been talking about parking more and we should be talking about water more.
Yeah, but par- parking is, is a big deal. And we really have very limited information about this in-lu parking, uh, concept. Is there something that we can, um, do to agendize an item like that, to really get clarity from the city council to know where we're going with that? Because it comes up so often. Like, what would we do? What are some of the plans that we would have to put that money into? And, uh, as, uh, Commissioner Corbin said, it really needs to be a distribution that's more fair. It really seems very unfair to have one bed and breakfast owner pay what, what amounts to a third of the existing budget to open a bed and breakfast, you know, next to Sunito. So, what can we do about that?
Through the chair, the key here is that the existing policy was set by the council. The existing policy is the rather strict parking requirements in the code that are, for, uh, some properties, difficult to meet, given existing land uses and given the fact that there's a certain portion of the existing properties that have zero parking because they have, they're built to the, built to zero lot lines or zero setbacks, but they're required to have fifteen, twenty, twenty-five parking spaces. That policy is built in a safety valve, the in-lu fees. Another safety valve exists through state law. The variance is used in the last project if variance findings can be made. Another safety valve is a planned development permit. Another safety valve is a straight request to council to waive the in-lu fee requirement. So, the existing, um, rather strict policy set has some safety valves built in to allow the commission, in some cases the council, in other cases never staff, to reduce those parking requirements, uh, in appropriate cases. The question the commission is proposing now is whether that existing set of policy framework is fair or not, or is consistent with what the commission would wish now. And the, is really a policy question to properly go to the council. So, the vehicle to do that would be, uh, for the commission to request that the council conduct an analysis of parking standards as they exist now, the in-lu parking fees that have been collected, how to use them, how best to use them, and what kinds of projects should be done with the money. Um, when the, the in-lu parking fee was set some time ago, I believe in the nineties, the city had a plan for using the funds at those times. And of course, it's not meant to be spent immediately. You have to build up the funds to match a project list. And it may be the case that the council would want to revisit that current project list to identify, does that fit the present reality?
Right. Because I think we all agree that there's a parking problem. There's no doubt about it. And so, it's, the question is, as a planning commission, how, how do we discriminate who gets charged and who doesn't get charged? And I know there's some, there's, there's some findings you can do, like, for instance, there's some ways out like you just, you just described. Um, there, there are ins and outs, but it doesn't seem to be, um, it doesn't resolve the, the ultimate parking problem. I mean, there is a parking problem downtown and what is our solution? And where, and so that in-lu fee that we're collecting is supposed to somehow mitigate that problem or create a solution. And we, that's the area I want to, I would like to focus on is what is that? That, a way I would feel better charging someone for that amount of money if we knew where that would go or what that would do. For instance, Chaparral, I mean, we talk, we're talking a lot about that property right there. Has tons of space in the back that's unused for parking. Is there, can the city lease some of that? Can we make, make, you know, these are types of real, and that's centrally located in, you know, downtown. That could relieve huge amounts, amounts of parking. We have a traffic light right there, right, that brings people in and out, uh, can get there. Not, not talking about skate park, but behind where, where the, where the buses are. These are, these are kind of solutions that I'd like to see or understand that, you know, we're working on. So, when we, we come up with an in-lu fee here and, and consider charging somebody for that, we, we know, we, we, we're, we feel good about it because we know where that money's going to go and ultimately saw, or saw, or help resolve a problem. So, go ahead.
And that's exactly the kind of conversation that we had at the council and with the council.
And I, I think that the fee needs to be commensurate with the actual impact on traffic that the particular project is going to, um, to cause.
I just had a comment. Um, first of all, I think findings need to establish, I mean, I hear people saying we have a parking problem. I have never had a prob- problem parking in Ojai. I've lived here since the early nineteen eighties. I always find a space within minutes. I go to all kind of events, shopping, da-da-da-da. So, I think it depends on...
That's a good point.
Can you walk a block or two? Wow, I can. But I think that needs to be established. But that aside, I guess we should get back to our project here.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to get back to this specific project. Rosalie, did you want to have, have a question for staff or?
I do. Um, so I just want to kind of establish what I'm seeing as sort of the obstacles here. So, one is the use, uh, the, the bed and breakfast use as it's attached to the garage, yes. So, um, if it's attached, I know that, I know that we've got a setback problem in the rear. So, if it's attached to the garage, is that, um, if, or attached to the garage, I know you're saying you can't make, perhaps make that finding. It would have to be detached. But were it to be attached to the garage, then do you have the same problem with the definition of a B and B?
Um, through the chair, essentially, yes, we do. Commissioners, the B, uh, the, um, the definition is residential structures with one family and a permanent residence with up to five bedrooms rented for overnight lodging where meals may be provided. Um, a bed and breakfast in with more than five guest rooms is considered a hotel or motel. So, um, it, it's just, there's, there's a new structure without a permanent residence in it and that just begins to cross over into a, uh, you know, what, what looks to be more like a hotel structure on a...
What, what, so what makes it a permitted residence? What, what confers that? In other words, there...
Single fam- the, the residence is in the existing structure.
Okay. Um, so...
That's where we're at and we, this is the, the purpose of, of us, you know...
Hang on, hang on, Commissioner Corbin. I'm still on this tack. So, is the PDP, does that, is that, um, the PDP can obviously be a way to relax certain standards. Is that one of them, the definition? If they went the planned development permit route?
Well, um, the, the section for the PDP, I'll just read it. The commission may approve a planned development permit in whole and part and shall impose specific development conditions. Um... Well, um, the PDP is, uh, is historically used, uh, to, uh, allow for flexibility in development standards rather than uses. Um, without getting into the details, the item next up on our agenda relates to nuance in uses and provisions in the code that, um, the commission can exercise with regard to uses that aren't specifically outlined in the use table for that zone district. So, there's, there's some, potentially some other avenues we could, um... So there's potentially some other avenues we could pursue if the commission feels that there's enough flexibility in the existing definition or lack of specificity.
Okay. Is the.
If I could add a brief comment there. Another way to get to it is, the issue stems from the fact that as staff has read the definition for B and B in 10-23602, it requires residential structure with the residence and the family and the lodging all in one. Then the question becomes, is the garage a residential structure or not? That would be the exact interpretation point for the commission. If the commission is comfortable concluding that a single-family garage is a part of an existing single-family residence, is itself a residential structure, then the commission could conclude that attaching the garage and the B and B rooms complies with the definition. Alternatively, the commission could conclude otherwise.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had had to do with the statement that it would need to be detached by two or three feet, that that's what staff was recommending, I thought, that it needed to be detached, not attached, because it's a, because the garage is legal non-conforming?
Yes, Commissioners of the, we have had similar projects come to us in the past that essentially request an extension of the legal non-conforming component of the structure that doesn't meet a development standard. There's some thresholds that we are comfortable with in terms of the percentage of the structure that's being, you know, altered. If it's no longer an alteration and really a full-on remodel and doubling in size, it stretches the procedures that we put in place in the past. It essentially allows, since you, you know, to put it another way, since you have something in the setback now, does that give you the right to extend that essentially illegal component of your project all the way out throughout your property? And that's sort of not the way the development code is set up. It wants you to isolate that existing legal non-conforming aspect and allow you a little bit of flexibility in terms of alterations. But just because you have something that's not consistent doesn't give you the right to make the rest of your property inconsistent.
So it was a matter of degrees in terms of this relative to the Topa Brewing?
Correct.
Okay. Because Topa Brewing was legal non-conforming as well, but you're just saying it was not the same degree of.
Topa was a different animal because it was a variance, so the variance findings were made in terms of that property being different from everybody else on the block.
Okay. And then the last thing is, so it sounds like you don't think variance is the way to go for the applicant to achieve their ends, that they should go the planned development permit route if they, because if you're saying you can't sort of find those findings up front, it sounds like not.
Commissioners of the, we tend to shy away from taking the path with an applicant on a variance because the findings have to really flush out the fact that the property is different. Not what you want to do with the property, it's that the property is different. Or relative to other properties in the immediate vicinity, it is literally being short-changed or, I can't remember the exact legal term, but you're not able to utilize your property to the degree that others are next to you with the same zoning.
Right. So just for clarity, just to summarize, so a planned development permit process with a finding that there's some wiggle room on the use issue for the B and B, how that gets defined per Mr. Summers' suggestions, and that it needs to be detached, the new structure needs to be detached from the garage. Those would be sort of the highlights of obstacles that might other, I mean, if they're here for concept review, I'm just.
The new part would have to be setback.
Right. You could attach it and then use.
If you attach, it just would have to be setback.
In other words, one approach to do would be to solve the definitional use problem, attach the garage and the new B and B units. And then to solve the setback problem, use a planned development permit with the appropriate findings. And maintaining, the new part couldn't keep the existing one-foot-nine-inch setback, the new part would have to meet the five-foot setback. But the old can stay. There's no obligation to remove the existing garage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Corbin, you had a question earlier.
I was trying to digest that.
I have, I have some questions. Following along in part with Commissioner Corbin's discussion of charges to individual homeowners, I'm wondering, is the fee for a new CUP, which is one of the possibilities here, how does that compare to the application for a CUP amendment? And how does it compare to an application for a PDP? That's my first question. And how big are those numbers?
Plan development is much more, it goes to two meetings. It goes to planning commission and city council for final approval.
A PDP is much more expensive, you're saying, than a CUP or a CUP amendment?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. I was confused in the package here, why we have attachment B at all. We have extensive drawings and photographs and all, and it's all of what exists. It isn't till we get to the very last page, attachment C, where we see, and frankly, it's a serious eye test, where we first see this proposed building in the back. And I can't, so I can't tell what the setbacks are exactly. I wondered, and since we're here for a concept review, we're not making any serious decisions tonight, but providing advice, I guess you'd say. I wondered, can we get around, first point, can we get around the B and B definitional problem by constructing a covered walkway that attaches to the primary residence and to the new building? Does that make it all part of the same building?
It has to be condition space, I believe.
And that would render the primary residence not conforming to the primary.
Is the primary residence currently conforming? Okay. So you can't make things more non-conforming than they are.
Yeah, that is correct.
But since the garage, oh, okay. The problem is with the setback at the rear of the property, not at the side. Theoretically, you could push that new building closer to the side as long as it was no closer to the property line than the existing garage. That's 10-21303.
That's not correct.
Okay.
As Jay indicated, the code does not want to aggravate the degree of non-conforming.
Correct, yes.
So the new structure would have to conform to the setback, even though it's attached to the non-conforming element, the existing garage, which only has the less than two-foot setback.
My understanding was if the proposed building had a three-foot setback, it did not increase the non-conforming nature of the project as a whole in that aspect. I'll grant you the rear property line.
Yeah, that is true.
But is that correct?
Commissioner Quilisi, to the chair, the real development standard that is going to be more difficult to achieve is the rear setback, which is 25 feet. So that's the aspect of the project, you know.
Oh, the rear setback is 25?
Correct.
Okay.
So some of this could be ameliorated with the planned development permit aspect. And so attaching the structures together and then having the applicant propose that there'd be some flexibility with regard to the setback standards through the PD process is a route that we could discuss further with the applicant.
Okay, just one last question. It sounds like the parking requirements for our current purposes are set in stone. If the planning commission at some future time were to grant some relief against the parking, in-lu parking fees, would that even be legal? Because we're contravening the existing municipal code.
Right. The planning commission doesn't have the power to exempt people from municipal code. The planning commission has the power, if the appropriate findings are made, to grant a variance, exempting someone from a particular requirement with the findings for a variance, or else to use existing authority in the code to recommend that the council, by approving a planned development permit, vary the parking standards. So it would have to fit into one of those existing council authorized, code compliant approaches.
Okay, then I'm looking for advice from staff, I guess, as to what would be the least costly path for this homeowner to get to a point where these buildings, or this new building, could be put on this property? Is it CUP, new CUP? Is it CUP amendment? Is it PDP? Is it PDP with variance?
It's a little bit difficult to answer that particular question in the abstract, partly because it would depend on processing time, the applicant's processing time. In general, the lower the review authority, the faster, the cheaper, which would mean that the applicant in that context would want to look for approaches that are approvable by this commission rather than requiring a trip to the city council. That would be the variance approach. But it remains to be seen, can the variance findings be made? And that's the key thing.
So a CUP with variance would be the smoothest path potentially for the homeowner, but fraught with legal problems?
I didn't say fraught with legal problems. I said that the applicant would have to ensure, through conversation with staff, that the findings could be made. As of course, this is a concept review, that particular question hasn't been answered in detail.
Sure, sure.
But staff has already commented that that would be a rugged route to take, that they would have trouble with the findings. So we're trying to find a way, not to do the cheapest way, but the most effective, efficient way. And I think we lose track of, by focusing on details about, you know, what's the most expensive thing, and we shouldn't let that happen. We should be thinking about how to help the applicant focus their thinking to create a project that's going to meet with approval as in the most expeditious way.
And the flexibility inherent in the planned development permit may accomplish that goal.
Right. That's what I'm hearing, is that even though it's not the cheapest way, it's the more efficient way. Because you got, you can address all the issues in one process.
Including the parking.
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
And that was, my next question is, Sunito, I guess that's a side yard setback next door. I had the pleasure of building that facility there, and that was a zero lot setback right there. And I know that is probably the rear setback of the other lot, and that's the side setback of, if you're looking at the photo, that was approved as a zero setback. Now, that's a side yard setback, I would assume there, and then this project is a rear yard setback. But a technicality like that, because in essence, it's a very similar situation, and that's where a PDP can address that and possibly show, you know, a consistency with a setback that's defined as a side yard, but one's a rear yard, a side yard, but they're just right next door to each other. Yeah, yeah, so to me, I could.
Reverse corridor lot.
Yes. So I think, and the way it's tucked in there, you probably can find findings to justify that setback, based on what else, what other pleasures others experienced in a not exact situation. See, it's a tough situation there because of how it's locked in there between those two properties. So I'm just kind of talking about that out loud, not knowing where I'm going with it. But, because to me, you know, to go back to a zero setback, it looks like that would work technically from a, with the project, because all the other structures are fixed around it.
I think that would have to do with the zoning. That would have to be, I mean, Sunito's on a.
You know, PDP can take care, can address that, where, you know, the other one won't be able to do that. And in that case, I think the setbacks work with what they have.
Okay. I know we have a lot of discussion here, but I'd like to hear from the applicant. Carrie, you want to represent him? Before we end it all out, Carrie, I want to know when the movie theater's going to reopen.
Right.
You know, I thought about bringing it up right at the beginning, I said, no, that's not on the agenda, but thanks for asking.
Yeah.
The hope is that we'll get started mid-January. So we're shooting for that. I've been told that some of the money is already in the bank, rest of it's supposed to be in by the end of this week. So holidays and.
Smoke.
Waiting to get a confirmation on what the actual permit cost is.
What we gave you is a credit line.
I wanted in writing one last time. And we'll get moving. So we're working on it.
Yeah, thank you for all your efforts in getting that.
And with lots of good fortune, the intent is to hopefully have it up and running by end of summer. So that'd be good.
Thank you.
All right. First off, I'd like an explanation of what the PDP is. Full, I don't have a full understanding of what that is and what's all involved with that.
It's called a planned development permit, but the staff can tell you more exactly.
Yeah, the Reader's Digest version is basically, it's a type of permit that's allowable in only certain zone districts, VMU being one of them. And it essentially just provides the decision-making body or the applicant more flexibility to meet, to design a project to meet the needs of the site rather than the development code. So it's a permit path that applicants can take to bend the development standards that are in the code. The extra step, though, in that process, in the PD process, is that the city council has to also approve it.
So it's multiple meetings involved with that. Is it one city council and one planning, or possibly more than that, depending on feedback?
Minimum one.
One each, minimum one.
One.
Yeah.
But they retain the right to continue.
Okay. So really, just to kind of elaborate, the intent of, you know, us doing a concept review without a full concept is because there's so many complex things going on with this property, we wanted to really get input from you guys first, before Ellen, the property owner, invested a lot of money into something that would say, oh, no, we can't do this, you can't do that. So this has been, this has been very helpful in us giving us guidelines on how to move The, and also based upon kind of some of the information dealing with parking, that could, parking and the setbacks could influence the size, how many extra rooms she does. Is it going to be just two extra rooms? Or is it going to be four extra rooms? Maximum of five is all that she's going for, which is what's allowable without it going to a hotel. And so we don't want to invest a huge amount of money just to get the concept together and then get it shot down. Ellen doesn't have the deep pockets that a lot of the developers for the bigger projects have around town. When it comes to the, as I've listened to the discussion about parking, I guess this was an appropriate time for us to have us on the agenda with that one on here first because it really opened up some other avenues. Talk about, there really is no other option other than off-street parking based upon the guidelines for bed and breakfast. They're not allowed, parking is not allowed in the front setbacks. And I don't think people, I don't think that's where you want a parking lot, is in the front of the building, not in this situation. This is one area that, there's always parking on the street, and it's also catty-cornered to the city parking lot. So that's not an issue. Versus downtown and this other project, you know, yes, you can usually find one or two spaces, but, you know, to find parking there is much more difficult than here. So I don't see that as an issue, and it does seem exorbitant in lieu of fees to try to do the 6,400 and change for four spaces. So a variance on that would be great, and the best avenue to go, we want that input. As far as the attachment or non-attachment to the garage, or even the possible attachment to the house to make it one large structure. to the house to make it one large structure, if we were to attach it to the house, then it becomes one structure. And then all of this PDP stuff really goes out the window, is that correct? Other than the...
The setbacks.
The setback.
Parking. With the parking, that you would handle with the B&amp;B definition.
Yeah, it would, it would help. I think, wouldn't it move it from a PDP to a design review?
If the structure was attached to the existing house, the definition is cleanly met, there's no issues there. The remaining issues then would become setbacks and parking.
Right.
Parking could be solved with a variance if the findings can be made, rather if the commission makes the findings. And setbacks then remains to be solved.
Yeah, looking at the proposed building there, I see no, even if one were to say, "Okay, we'll take the garage out and put it somewhere else," or who knows what, I don't think there's space there to get onsite parking, no matter what you do with any of the structures existing or proposed.
Mr. Nolan?
Um, I had a hard time reading the plan that we were provided, even with my glasses on, I'm squinting to read the text.
Apologize for that.
And because of that, my, you know, I'm having a harder time responding to things. So for instance, I'm looking at the plan right now, and if I was on the east side of your proposed new structure, and then I go to the property line, I don't even know what that distance is right now. So I couldn't make a, I have an idea, but it may not be appropriate. But could somebody tell me what that is?
Which, which distance?
So if I'm on, here, I'll show this here.
The top, the north part.
But this would be the east side of the building, right? And this is the side yard setback? Am I correct in that?
I'm not sure if I've got that dimension.
Yeah, I just don't know what that number is. And if I did, I feel like I could maybe make the comment.
Looks like the second floor.
The lot is 50 foot wide.
Oh, is that what they...
And so, we're talking about 29 feet from the west property line.
Ground floor, 575, second floor.
So this would be the east property line to the edge of the proposed structure.
So, 50 minus 29, there would be 21 feet.
Right. And so, and then if I go back and I look at the setbacks, I think, what was it, 10% of the, it wasn't a fixed number, 10% of the lot width, maximum 10 feet. So I guess what I'm, where I'm going with this is, I don't know that it was fully explored, all the options of how maybe you could have applied the footprint of this proposed building. And of course, ideally, if it was attached to the main structure that's existing, you would resolve one of the issues that you have right now, the fact that it's detached and doesn't meet the B&amp;B definition. So I don't know if that happened, based on what I'm seeing here.
Well, one of the other parameters that we were working around, as you see, all the green, which are the trees, the green outlines, those are oak trees. And so we're also trying to place it strategically within the oak trees, not to, so we don't interfere. We've had Maconaba assess the property as well, and we have a full tree report on that. And so, that kind of also helped with some of the parameters of where we placed this.
Okay.
Is that what those squiggly marks, those are the trees?
Yes, the green marks are documented oak trees.
Okay.
And that, those documented oak trees that are drawn on there were actually put on there by Maconaba.
Okay.
And no matter what you do, the 25-foot setback at the rear of the property is going to kill you every time.
Yes, a big one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it looks, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I mean, it looks as though the structure to some degree is under the canopy of one of the oaks.
Just slightly.
Slightly, yeah.
And if you, if you look at that, the darker pink area, which is the first floor, is five foot farther to the west than the second floor, which overhangs.
Okay.
And we did that to mitigate some of the impact on that tree at the ground level.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think, as you can see, this is a complex issue. It's going to be, I don't know that there's a simple answer for all this.
There's not. And so, you know, just some guidance from you is what we need in order to become, to come up with a real drawing and a real idea, real design. So, the best way to go, whether it's the CUP with a variance, or any of these other options that you've rolled out, you know, we want this to be cost-effective, as well as timely. And so, without spending another year just going through meetings and designs and trying to come up with the idea, Ellen would really like to start getting something going so she can generate some additional income on the property.
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you doing this concept review, because it gives us a chance to kind of talk through these issues rather than just saying yes or no on them.
Right.
So, this is good. Yes, Mr. Nolan?
I have a question. And I completely understand, you know, the limited, or times that we would use a variance. But because they have, because of the oak trees, would that be, could a variance be considered? There are protected tree species in the state of California, ideally, you're not supposed to be planting under the canopy.
Constructing under the drip line is another variance, I think.
Right, so would that constitute...
A finding, yeah.
A finding?
It would be a point to study further. It's difficult to say in this moment, would it be sufficient?
Exactly, we don't have enough information, but potentially.
But it's certainly, I think, high on the list of things to study.
Mm-hmm, okay, just curious.
Certainly what works in your favor is the location, being surrounded by a condo complex and a hotel, you know, for the use of the property. So I think people would be sympathetic to that. I mean, you're not trying to do something that the neighborhood is not consistent with the neighborhood. So, you're completely consistent there. In fact, when we built that, that property, they, the owners of Sunito, were going to buy that property and make it part of that whole unit. So I was very familiar with that house in itself, and, you know, had to, because we built right up against it in a lot of ways. So, but it really would be very consistent. So, but it's hard to answer that, but I would think you'd find, you know, a kind of a sympathetic ear in the process because of the use of the property where it is. And I don't know how, what you could do with that. I don't know if you can take that to a bank or anything, but that's, that's the good, the good part of it.
It's the going price on a sympathetic ear, yeah.
Well, the fact that, you know, you've got this little tiny house surrounded by these two-story structures all the way around, it just, I'm surprised it didn't go the other way when, when those structures were built and impacting that little house.
I think they wanted to buy that property, but for whatever reason, they, you know, they held out and so.
I note, excuse me, may I speak?
Jump right in.
I think I read in here that there's already one B&amp;B bedroom in the existing residence.
Yes, that is correct.
So you've already got, call it strangers walking through the house.
Yeah.
At present.
Yeah, so the process was that we first came and got, because to make the property legal, it only had the single-car garage, and we needed to have two legal parking spaces on the property. So that's when we came and got the CUP to do the tandem parking. Next, we came and got the CUP to, for a one-room bed and breakfast. So it's a two-bedroom house. Ellen lives in the house and has one room as a bed and breakfast. And she would like to expand that to have a total of five bed and breakfast rooms, and with her full intent to continue living in the house.
And what's the, just offhand, the existing footprint of the house? Is it comparable to this 1,100-plus square feet?
It's 950 square feet.
950, okay. I'm just wondering if anyone had considered maybe building a second floor on the existing house.
And...
Might not work, I don't know. You've still got the parking problem, the setback problem goes away.
The tree issue goes away.
The tree issue goes away because the house doesn't, well, the one tree there might be a problem. But I don't know that you want to create a Franken-B&amp;B either.
Exactly, I don't think it would be, it would be nearly as attractive from the front as well as it, it's a, Ellen, do you know when the structure was built?
Long time ago.
So, you know, the amount of code upgrade and retrofitting to make that first floor support a second floor would be tremendous.
Yeah, okay.
So, but yeah, that could be a possibility.
1946.
46?
Yeah.
Okay.
Immediate post-war.
I would consider, you probably considered like more of a hacienda approach, you know, just crawling, getting attached to the existing and kind of moving in that backyard as you can, you know, why, you don't, you can build under a canopy to some degree, you know, that's not completely...
With an arborist report and...
Yep, exactly. So, I think you can move back, you know, off the house itself and making it a contiguous property. That would take some of those, you know, elements out of there and meeting the setbacks, then you're dealing with parking. So I can see that taking the existing house and just, you know, extending it backwards to the, to the back property, the setback, which is still, I think, unfortunate that it's 25 feet, and everything else there. Yeah, well, the neighbor next to you, the condo applies, complies with that, but it's a funny thing.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I think that would, it's a matter of taking certain risk elements out of the equation. If you were to make one contiguous property, that helps, number one. Number two, if you meet the setbacks, that's more help, right? Then now we're just dealing with parking.
Right. So, so a question, dealing with the garage. Scenario, we demo this garage, built a new garage. Is then a requirement going to be that it's got to be a two-car garage?
No, I don't think so.
Well, if you demo it and build a new garage, it's got to have a five-foot setback, right?
But yes, it would have to have the five-foot setback. That, but, but could you build, could it still come back just as a single-car garage and not be, then be required to have two covered parking spaces?
Mr. Chair, you have, to the applicant, you have a variety of flexibility with the planned development permit that could accommodate that flexibility.
Well, you already have a CUP for the...
In parking and setbacks.
Two CUPs.
Yeah, you have a CUP already that allows you to do the parking there, just have the one-car garage, right? So you could...
That's, that's true.
That in place.
So if we retain that CUP for that tandem parking, kept that, then it could still, that's already a legal route, and just rebuild the single car with the proper setbacks, then it could be attached to the house and be all contiguous, and there's not an issue, correct? With that part of it.
Less issues, yeah.
Less of an issue. If you go back and look at the layout of the property and put in the setbacks that are required, and see, see what you can fit in.
Mm-hmm.
And the parking's one's going to, it's going to be, you know, you're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with parking mitigation somehow, yeah.
Parking's never going to get in there.
Right, right. So what makes the parking different in this situation versus the previous situation? Why would that one, without going through a planned development, get the variance? But this one, you're saying, in order to do it, the best way to go is go through a PDP?
Mr. Chair, the, it's about the property and whether or not other, your neighbors on the same block or in the vicinity are meeting the development standards. So there is a difference in the previous project where nobody had any parking, essentially. So, the analysis would need to be conducted to measure whether or not the neighbors, Sunito, et cetera, are meeting parking. And walking down that route with regard to a variance is what we would head and have to look at, measuring your project next to the standards that are being met or not being met at other properties. So that's not usually a place we want to head with an applicant unless it's obvious.
Okay. Does the works across the street, the office complex across the street, do they have onsite parking?
No, they don't.
I'm not aware of.
They do not.
Not familiar with.
So, right there, that's a similar situation.
Yeah.
But Sunito does, and so does...
Sunito and the condos do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
Yeah, when the works building was approved, there was a, one of the conditions was, they were going to use on-street parking. And they were supposed to put in signs there saying, limiting the parking to just people that owned houses on that street. I don't know that that was ever done, but there's no, there's no onsite parking on that property. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you can, you also apply for those in lieu fees to be reduced, you know, you still pay a portion of them or pay, you know, submit that. I don't know how that would, how that would work out, but, you know, there's some flexibility there. That would go to city council.
Okay. Ellen, do you have any questions at this point?
How much is this, is a PDP?
PDP?
PDP, how much is it costing? I couldn't find it anywhere, I have no idea. It's another expense, I know.
It's on our fee schedule on the website, but I'm guessing it's around at least $6,000.
I think you had written down the number, $6,000.
$3,000 for a normal DRP.
But that's a deposit, isn't it? You're not assumed to use all that money. Isn't that correct, Sherry?
Correct.
So you put the money up front, but you don't necessarily go through all that money, depending on...
It's on my website. I can get it.
Okay.
You know, Carrie, there's, there's another side of this, you know, thinking that you might get your head around in the parking. $32,000 may sound like a lot of money, but if you had to create parking onsite, you know, with covered parking, you'd probably spend $32,000. So in that respect, I mean, that's a reframing of the way of thinking about it, that you might just say, "Okay, $32,000 is part of the budget, it pays for my parking." And then if you just let that go, then you're home free with that issue.
And has that a...
Where'd the money go?
I know. Well, that's another question. It goes to the fund right now that they have.
Yeah, that's the big discussion we're having, is, we want to know where all the money is, because we don't know.
So for me, Sheldon, another 28, I just couldn't know where it went.
Yeah.
Soon, I don't know.
It would.
Yeah, we'd like to know that too. But it's good, right now, we know that it's in a fund somewhere and sitting there.
All right. Carrie, I hope that's enough information. I don't know that we can really...
So, I'd like to just backtrack for, or just kind of get a summary from all of you, based upon all the information that we have right now and what you know and what you've learned. What do you think would be our best route to go? Which of these concepts?
Mr. Isabel, you want to?
I don't know, I don't, I've only seen one concept. So right now, what I'm hearing is your best route is the PDP.
Is the P, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and then you've got to cross your fingers that you get, you know, the definition of a B&amp;B sort of adjusted. But, I mean, I don't, I'm not hearing anything else other than completely redesigning your project here.
Right.
Clear that that would even work, you know.
That doesn't, yeah, I'm not hearing that that works. So I don't, I'm not hearing another route. Does anybody else hear a route?
One point to clarify, if I could jump in here, and staff wanted out for this clarification. The planned development permit, there is a path to that to be approved just by this commission and not by the city council. That exists if two facts are true. One, it's the three things. One, it's VMU, which is met here. Two, the lot coverage is less than 50%. And three, the floor area ratio is less than .5. So, in terms of your sizing, if you get it below those triggers, then it would go to this commission, not to the council, which would save some time and money.
So the entire square footage of the property, of structures on the property is less than 25%?
No.
It would be a floor area ratio of .5, so 50.
Floor area ratio of...
The floor area ratio is the ratio between the total floor area and your acreage, would have to be less than .5. So...
Excluding...
Includes.
Including, okay.
In other words, the total condition square footage would have to be less than half of the acreage.
Less than half or less than 25%?
Half. Half.
Yeah.
If you have a 6,000 square foot lot, you can't have more than 3,000 square feet of space.
Why not?
So it's up to 50%.
Yeah.
Okay, so the...
And you could do above that, but that would trigger council approval, as opposed to this commission.
Okay, so at the VMU, we, we have, the total square footage is less than 50% of this, of the lot size.
Correct.
Correct, and what was the third?
That the lot coverage is less than 50%. And the lot coverage test, not your square footage, but the lot coverage tests any building or structure or hardscape above dirt.
So, one has to do with the footprint and the other has to do with the floor area...
Okay.
Of all the structures.
So, I mean, in this situation, what we've got designed here, the struct, all the structures are less than 50% of the lot size.
So then you would qualify.
I believe that's true, but I haven't verified the math myself, but I trust the statement yet.
What's 950 for the house?
That's true, you would qualify.
500 for the garage, 1150 or so.
2,585 square feet total, and we have, and 50% of the lot is 2,956 square feet. So, we're 400 square feet under.
So then it would seem that you could, you could pursue a plan development permit, subject approval by this commission. The, the only caveat I wanna offer is that staff will need to confirm all of this, more than just sitting here right now.
So that's still a planned development permit, but without going to the council?
Unless, of course, it was appealed.
Who would appeal it if we approved it?
Yeah, you probably wouldn't have that much opposition.
Well, you never know.
One never knows. I don't wanna, it's always a possibility.
Who else has stand, who else would have standing to appeal?
Any, anyone has standing to appeal.
Maybe Sunito doesn't want the competition.
I'm not saying anyone is existing that would do so, but we should always remember it's a possibility.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds like a good plan, though, if you could do a...
Yeah.
PDP, but only have one planning commission meeting, that would be great.
You'd have to come here in.
So, how does that go into motion? Is that, i- i- if we do, if we decide to do a PDP, is the first meeting with planning commission then to council? Or is it council first, then...
No, no, you don't have to meet with council. You would just come to the planning commission, get our approval, and you'd be ready to go.
But a standard one?
A standard one, you'd, you'd...
Do here first, then go to council afterwards.
Yeah.
So, with, under, under this proposal, we just come here and possibly be done?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time, it's a bit skewed, we appreciate the help.
Yeah, well, I hope you can...
Appreciate it very much.
Figure something out that makes sense for you in terms of...
I'll get to stay on.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your patience with this whole process. Um, next item is the, uh, concept review for the use of a vacant lot adjacent to the Topa Mountain Winery for temporary parking. Um, could we hear from staff on this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is another concept review, CR 1707, uh, for use of a vacant lot adjacent to Topa Mountain Winery for a temporary parking facility. The applicant is proposing to use and improve the property as temporary parking, um, and we qualify temporary as being without permanence, uh, structures in place, asphalt, lighting, or landscaping, uh, and it's, so therefore it's temporary, uh, for use for overflow parking during certain events at the Topa Mountain, uh, Winery. There's language in the code, as we've discussed on some other items today, about the nuance between uses that are not specifically outlined in the use tables. Give certain, um, uh, discretion to the commission to approve, um, of uses not specifically outlined, and staff has looked at this and we've, you know, decided it's at least worth bringing to you for your, uh, feedback on whether or not the use of, of the property as temporary parking, um, with the absence of those permanent structures is something you're comfortable with.
Thank you, do we have questions for staff, anyway? All right.
Well, I, I, I had a question about...
You do have a question.
Yes, thank you. Uh, your table one, basic development standards, it says site coverage is TBD. I think it's zero since there's no proposed structures. And, and floor area ratio, I think, is also, would be zero because there are no structures going in. There's nothing above ground, we're just talking about a flat space to put cars. Right?
Commissioner Colossi, uh, well, we typically just, uh, wait for the applicant to provide their analysis in the full set of plans, uh, but, um, at this time, we would have to do a little bit more homework on what constitutes a structure. Uh, lot coverage typically, um, relates to those things, it's, uh, are, don't, are, are impervious. So, a parking lot, uh, is not something that's pervious, but, um, it's, it's a standard that we would need to do some more research on, on, after a full submittal.
Uh, Mr. Summers was talking about things above the dirt, and, and here, I'm not sure that we had any.
Hardscape asphalt is impervious, hardscape asphalt is between the dirt and the, and the sky.
Okay.
The site coverage question is a pervious surface requirement. And so if you have, but the, with parking lot, the solution is, is if, if the level would be above the standard, you put in some permeable paving and then the problem is solved.
All right. Steve, would you like to enlighten us?
Good evening once again. But while we're on the subject of permeability, that, that is the whole intent of what we would like to see. So what we have before us is a situation where, uh, we have a need for overflow parking. It's, uh, and I think we're labeling it temporary because it's not a continued use type of requirement on our part, where we have it every day. We're looking at perhaps, uh, on, on the weekends and perhaps a special event or two.
So intermittent might apply rather than temporary?
I would, I would think that would be a fair assessment of what we're looking for.
You're, you're looking at a permanent thing that you only use part of the time?
Um, I, I guess it could be phrased that way, I mean, we need to have access to it on an ongoing basis. So the situation, to give you a little perspective, is currently, uh, the winery utilizes the parking at the, uh, to the, uh, property to the Westerly, which is Boku. They, they have an agreement. At this point in time, they are expanding their facility in different degrees, and, uh, as a consequence of that, uh, Mr. Guerra is losing his, uh, his place to park, his overflow. And, and so, uh, in lieu of using, utilizing that parking, uh, we're, uh, in communication with Ojai Valley Inn, who owns that adjacent property that we're talking about right now. And, so, coming before you as a concept review, where we wanna just run some, uh, general ideas by you in terms of what we like to do there, and, uh, we presented you with a, a site plan. And the, the idea here is to, uh, leave essentially the property pretty much exactly as it is now, you know? By that, I mean, uh, it's overflow parking, it's not daily use. We're thinking of basing it and providing perhaps, um, railroad ties to define the boundaries of it. But, but, and so doing, uh, also recognize the need for, you know, uh, correct measurements and dimensions between four parking stalls and that sort of thing, but minimize, do a minimal impact on that property, if you will.
You say basing, what do you mean?
Um, ba- basing, I, I don't know, I lost my train of thought. Oh, road base, road base, okay, so that's your, that's your composite, uh, gravel and sand that they use as a substrate on roadways?
Okay.
Sometimes it's exposed.
So you're talking permeable, permeable space?
Yes, we wanna keep it permeable, we don't wanna get into hard surfaces, we don't wanna get into curbing, we wanna minimize landscaping to nothing if possible, and, uh, really leave it, the property as it is. And that, and that's the intent of it, you know, that, uh, pure and simple, uh, just to have that access, that accessibility to overflow parking, because that adjacent property, we have access from our property without having to go and encroach with additional driveways from, uh, from Ojai Avenue. We can approach egress, ingress from, uh, from, uh, the winery's property, own property there. And that's demonstrated in the, uh, site plan that we have presented to you. And that's, that's the essential idea, is just to, uh, keep it simple, you know, keep it as simple as possible, because the use is just, it's just that, it's just overflow parking, there's no need to get into high development standards with it, the way we see it.
Great. Questions, Mr. John Yellen?
Obviously with permeable, um, kind of surfaces, you, you've got this kinda half gravelly, half, you know, field kinda look, you know, weeds kinda grown up through it, I'm, I'm kinda visualizing kind of a, a, kind of a scraggly, you know, parking lot in most of the time, because it, you, you, you... What I'm trying to say is that it's hard to commit to that middle ground without some kinda manicuring of the parking area to make it look decent, and not like a vacant lot like the bowling alley lot, you know, where, well, that's, that's pavement that's all broken up, but you know what I mean? Permeable soil also will grow things through it. And so, yeah, that may be what you want, you know, temporarily to have it, but it could also, with that gravel in between, look very much like a blotted piece of dirt, you know? And so, so I'd rather, I personally, I'd rather see it groomed with gravel, you know, like a, a, a chip seal, you know, which is still permeable, but it's defined, it'll look cleaner, it'll, uh, I, I personally, I think the parking is, is a good idea, I, I can, I can see on the weekends what happens to the facility there, and people love being there, so, I mean, let's make it accessible, and plus, there's other events where this could be useful. You know, we have our parades, people are, you know, pulling in there, they're doing all kinds of things, so it's, it's a good use.
That's how it's been used for...
Yeah, it's, it's been used that way anyway, and I'm just, would like personally to have it a little bit more manicured than, than this, this kinda half...
And, uh, honestly, I see it, in all fairness, I see it the same way, I don't see it as a weed patch, be, a neglected lot, corner lot or something of that nature.
Yeah, without any borders and just kinda...
I know that, um, uh, the owner Larry, Mr. Guerra, wouldn't, wouldn't feel right about that himself.
And I don't think the Ojai Valley Inn would want it either like that.
Correct, that's correct, so we, so in that sense, it has to be a defined area.
Right.
That's the, that's the purpose of the railroad ties, um, and, and, uh, the surface material that we use would have to be, you know, the, the, um, when you use a, a, a road base, it pretty much keep, if it's utilized, it pretty much keeps any weed of aim in it.
Road base does, but it, it's not very permeable, we know that, road base isn't permeable, you know, and, but, you know, I don't know if it's necessary, because the water shed, will shed, and you have enough permeable area around it.
So do you believe that, uh, a chip seal would be more permeable?
Well, you have, what? Well, form, a form of chip seal is, okay, yeah, yes, and, and it depends on what kind of, you know, there's different definitions, but, you know, we just went through this on the parking lot, right, that we're doing, you can see it downtown Ojai, right next to Suzanne's. So, it, it's going through all the different surfaces. There's, you know, to create a permeable, uh, base, you can't, you know, you, you can't technically have base. Base is, becomes a non-permeable substance, so it's, it's a, yeah.
Because due to compaction and, uh...
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm thinking there's some permeability to it because of the fact that it's sand, and it's an aggregate.
I guess it's the quality of base and the type of base that you get, you know, to, to do that, but my, my research said that the, the type, it, it was more of a gravel with a, with a sand composite that you compacted, and, and it wasn't quite, it's not the base you just order, you know, from...
It's not the, yeah, it's number six or whatever they refer to it.
Number six base, yeah.
Okay, so...
But you just do some, do some research.
We had a sand, a few, couple inches of sand as, as a, the bottom substrate, I'm just, I know we're getting technical here, and we put gravel over the top, we could accomplish that permeability, because that's what we, that's obviously what we want. We don't wanna get into big drainage systems and retention ponds or bioswells, things of that nature. Uh, leaving it as, and that's the intent of leaving it as natural as possible, because it's, uh, so that's, that's where we're coming from with this.
But definitely a gra, uh, you're talking about a gravelly type of structure?
Yeah.
I mean, not, not a...
I think that would work for us, I, I think that would be fine, yeah, we don't wanna get into pay, uh, creating a parking lot, a paved parking lot, just...
So, Commissioner Yellen could probably provide a little more input.
Yeah, I was, I mean, basically, if you're gonna be driving on this and there's gonna be vehicular traffic, which that's the intention, you're gonna have to put, have some level of compaction, and you're gonna have to have a base, even if you put gravel on top, because what happens is you kinda start spinning it, even if it's crushed or coarse gravel, and then it starts integrating with the soil. So you really have to do, and, and you will get some permeability, but the thing with the, um, chip seal is, you can put, you can do chip seal over road base, but what they put down is a tackifier. Yeah, and then you lose, and it looks great, you know, it's like a small, really fine gravel on top. It looks good, but you lose more permeability, I mean, basically it is impermeable once you add the chip seal.
Well, the chip, chip seal is the, is the, you're talking about the oil that they put on.
The seal is the oil, the chip is the, the gravel, or the fine, the fines that they use, so, yeah.
I think that, uh, I, I think the question before the commission really is the use. Uh, I think we can, I think, I think we can, we can determine what, what the proper base is, if, if, if the commission feels that that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's options.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I, I guess I was just wanting, making sure it looked, it looked, you know, decent when it's not being used and not being a kind of an overgrown kinda half parking lot, half field.
And I'm sure that, uh, I mean, like I, that wouldn't happen in this case, I mean, if you wanted to condition it as such for maintenance, I don't think we'd have an issue with that, uh, because it reflects the winery itself, you know, so...
Yeah. Commissioner Isabella had a comment, why?
So, it just really disturbs me that nobody is pointing out the fact that you guys cut your parking in the middle, at the end of your project, and you made all these assurances that there weren't gonna be any events, and there wouldn't be any pro, parking problems, and the conditions of your approval require a temporary use permit for all of your events, but that hasn't occurred. And now all of a sudden, there's 20,000 square feet of land you want dedicated to parking right at the gateway to the city, and if it's not you using it, it'll be the Ojai Valley Inn, who also didn't need nor, more parking for their massive project. I mean, where do we hold people accountable for what they say they're going to do? And do we really want 20,000 square feet worth of parking right there? And let's also think, what does it mean when there's 80 cars parked there? Oil, junk into the aquifer. I mean, I don't think we can cheap out on this if you guys do decide that's something that makes sense. But, I mean, I just feel like, where do we hold people accountable for what you say?
Well, you know, um, the, the, I think, I believe, I'm, it's been a while since I looked at those conditions, uh, Commissioner, but I believe that we were set up for special events, uh, we have the opportunity to do that. Uh, when you're going through two, uh, a process that's two years before it's realized, it's often difficult to anticipate usage. It's quite difficult, we had, we hope for the best. We actually thought we had a, 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 a proper amount of, uh, of parking available, but we also realized, or sensed that we had, we were hoping, in the hope that we would have the next door neighbor available to that parking, to greet, greet this, that has since changed hands, and it creates its own set of problems. This issue here is something that, um, we look at that property and see that it is being used as parking, uh, on quite a number, like you indicated, uh, whether it be the Fourth of July parade or special events held by the inn, there, that use is going on. The accountability issue is, uh, I, I, I look at it as, you know, what you have there now is dirt and, and wild weeds. I don't think what we would propose there would significantly change the aesthetics of that, of the downtown entrance area, I don't think it's gonna be, create any issues in terms of, uh, blight or, uh, uh, or denigrating the, uh, the looks and... or, uh, uh, or denigrating the, uh, the looks and views from the street to have a lot that's going to be there to accommodate overflow parking on such few occasions.
Well, I think that's the problem. I don't think it's going to be few occasions. I think that when you're not using it, then the Ojai Valley Inn will use it. And it, it was kind of a nice field until the Ojai Valley Inn dumped all their dirt on it from their project. Now it's a dirt field, but I think.
Well, I don't, I, I just, I respectfully disagree with you on the Ojai Valley Inn using it. That would be a negotiated contract between the lease or in this case, we're in a lease by option situation perhaps. And that would be totally up to, in that agreement to determine who gets the use of that property.
Well, do you have that agreement now?
No, because we're waiting to see where we're going.
So that could still be negotiated, you're saying?
It, absolutely, absolutely.
In which case it would be not intermittent use, it might be more a regular use. I mean, I think people need to picture it as a parking lot with cars in it.
Sorry for interrupting. I think we have to determine the amount of usage. And that needs to be, uh, conditioned in this, in this proposal. That's how we get around that. So it's not a, um, right now, for instance, we're thinking maybe eight to 10 days a, a month. You know, this is an open discussion Larry, so if you feel like you want to interject, please do. Um, that's what we're looking at. We're not looking at 30 days of, of consistent use of this. This is just backup for those days. You drive by there, most of the time, that parking lot is empty. You get there on Saturday and Sunday and people are parking at, at the, currently are parking at the Boku parking lot and walking over to it. And that's all this is, is to relieve that congestion, so.
So what do you think about Steve, the, um, issue of, you know, oil and stuff dumping into the ground and into the aquifer?
Well, I think dumping any kind of toxicity into the ground is a bad idea.
You know, address that in terms of.
Well, how does that differ from a paved parking lot?
What about permeable?
When it rains, the water takes it into the drainage channels or into the retention pond, you know? Uh, that, you're still dealing with it.
Well, we, we may still be dealing with it, but, but that doesn't mean that, you know, as we continue to realize how precious our aquifer is and that we need to protect it, you know, shouldn't we be forward thinking about how we construct parking lots going forward to mitigate that?
I would agree. I would agree. It's a concern that has to be addressed properly, but.
Yeah.
It's a good thing this is a concept review.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it's all right.
Any other, uh, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, I have a question. So you're thinking, you're estimating, um, now that it'd be eight to 10 days a month.
Do you agree with that Larry?
It's, yeah, so, um, generally it's, it's usually Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay.
So if there's four weeks in a month, it's eight.
It's on the weekends.
Weekends.
Sometimes it's, there's five weeks.
Right.
Uh, but the other thing that we do is, you know, we've done a lot of fundraisers for, you know, just about every big organization in this town. Uh, the Ojai Tennis Tournament, the Ojai Playwrights, uh, you know, Ojai Valley Schools, Montessori Schools. I mean, it's just, it's a great valuable resource to the community. And so we thought we had a permanent solution, you know, getting back to having a special event. We could only do that if we had parking in place to accommodate it. We had an agreement with the inn and we had all the parking we needed for anything we were doing. Uh, but then they decided to, you know, move on and have a new tenant come in who wants to grow his business and use that parking lot. So it's, it's not available, but, you know, when I look at it, so it's, you come in, you drive in, you see the Boku parking lot full or you see this new parking lot full. It, it would essentially be the same thing, uh, but it would be contiguous to our property. And, you know, it's, like I said, I, I think what we've created there is a really pretty special place. I mean, there's nothing like it in Ojai. If you haven't been out, you know, come out on a Saturday or Sunday, see all the local families with their kids, having picnics, their dogs, hanging out for hours. There's nothing like it around. We need parking to keep that going. And, you know, our best option is this field next door. So it's, you know, eight to 10 days, other special events could take a long, you know, a few more, could be less.
And then the hours are typically, what is it, on all day or?
So our hours are generally 12 to seven and on Friday and Saturdays, we're open till eight. So those would be the, the hours going forward.
I don't know if any else have any comments, but I wanted to thank you for putting the winery together. I know it was a long process getting in there in the first place. Um, and I, I was just thinking in the last month, I've been there twice for, uh, one for the music department, another one was a birthday party for a friend of ours. And both times we use the Boku parking lot, but then you have to walk through that other price property. So in a lot of ways, this makes more sense to me in terms of.
It actually, you know, from a safety standpoint, it's even better because when people come into our parking lot, it's full. They have to go out, make a left turn, go down to Boku. What we're proposing, they come in, it's full, just drive down parallel and go right into this new parking space. There's no left turns into the, the traffic.
Mr. Quill, say again.
Yeah, I, I would, I would, uh, agree in part with Commissioner Zabilla's concerns about a long row of parking lots as you come into the town. Have you considered as a part of your negotiations with the inn on the property, putting in some visual screening at the front, at the street edge of this property to break up that, that visual, I mean, because Boku's got a pretty big parking lot. And you have a fair amount of parking on the street side of your buildings as well.
Yeah.
So that's something that you might consider.
Yeah, no, that is something we can consider. And, you know, if you're driving through there, the oaks are actually pretty dense at that point. So you, you actually don't see, you know, it would be less visible than Boku.
But they're well off the ground.
The, the oaks help, but, you know.
Well, they're down, you know, there's, they're also growing along the ground, uh, so.
But additional landscape might be the answer to that. You know, a screen wall of landscape is fairly straightforward and simple, uh, approach that might answer that problem. I think this is a, there, there's always trade-offs involved. Um, you know, we're just trying to come up with a solution that, that works for, uh, obviously works for the winery and works for the community as well. Um, it's an amazing, uh, project for just those reasons that Larry cited. The, the, the social aspect of it, seeing the community come together. It's provided a much needed, uh, venue for just that type of thing. And, uh, and because of that, it's very, it's been successful. And this is actually part of the fallout from a success, you know, is having the need for the more parking.
Well, that's, I think the community is probably glad to see your financial success and your contributions to the city's economy as a result. And I would hate to see it choked off if you couldn't find any place for your customers to park. I'm not saying this is exactly the right answer, but there has to be some sort of answer.
Well, and that's what we're trying to do is just, you know, we're here to get your feedback on it. And, uh, we just thought that a permeable or impervious paving was not the answer.
Right.
Uh, just in our, my estimation, it created more issues than solved issues. Uh, leaving it more natural if we can.
Mr. Chair?
Just a comment or, uh, direction to staff would be helpful from the commissioners with regard to the use. Um, given that the, uh, use is allowed, um, on, on the property now in this own district in a permanent state. So, uh, flexibility is given, you know, to the, the commission to give us direction on what constitutes temporary in terms of frequency or duration and then development standards for landscaping or other flexibility. So if we could maybe center the, uh, when you're ready, comments in that regard to staff about how to, um, move the project definition into a temporary fashion, that would help us.
Oh, okay. Um, Commissioner Zabilla, did you have a further comment?
Did I?
Yeah?
Not now.
No, okay.
Is it, is it more difficult to get this property characterized with temporary use rather than permanent use?
The code doesn't address temporary parking. Uh, but we think that you, the, the commission has the latitude to provide direction. Get, if this is indeed going to be used intermittently, um, then that might be appropriate. Um, but, um, nor is parking exclusively a permitted use in the zone. It would require, I believe, a conditional use permit, so.
All right. Okay. Mr. Zegiel?
Well, I would, um, my feedback then specifically is, um, to move forward. I think that the business, the Topo, Topo Winery, the Topo Winery really does provide a community venue that I know many people appreciate. And to use the parking in this way is not only a safety, you know, issue, there, there's, it's, it's a much better design than what you have going over to Bo, Boku. Um, I would suggest that we, uh, the hours that Larry, um, suggested, um, the weekends seemed very reasonable. Um, also I would recommend a permeable base, which I just looked up. Uh, there's different types of base and it's called a permeable base. And it just has larger aggregates in it and it just, it gives you more permeability with a, um, with a defined, you know, defined, um, hardscape border like you have and with, you know, shielding, uh, landscaping to shield the vehicles. Um, but yet not high, but, you know, shrub, just to give it some, a nice look if you're seeing it off the road.
I think that's a great idea.
That, that's, that's how I feel about it.
I wouldn't want to see a used car parked lot, parking lot at the big entry of the city either. Um, and I think landscape is the solution.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, I just had a question, um, and this is about the border that you're proposing. And I'm assuming that's just to hold in the base material.
A retainer.
Retainer. But you're not actually marking or delineating parking spaces.
Not really. We want to just keep it loose, you know?
Um, and this kind of goes along the lines of Commissioner Zabilla's, um, concern about toxicity. I would just make sure that the railroad ties, which are typically treated with creosote, aren't used because they're toxic, um, if you do use that, um, that material. And I, I think I'm understanding why you probably want to use something like that is because if you had to pull it out, it's temporary. It's not like you're pulling in, I mean, not that you can't take concrete out, but it's less temporary.
Very much so. I think we need flexibility in this whole situation.
Yeah, I understand, um, and I've been to many events too and I appreciate all the, the fundraising, um, nonprofit events that have gone on at the winery. And I do see the traffic problem and agree with Commissioner, um, Jagiello that it's definitely safer. But I also, um, completely agree with Commissioner Zilla, uh, Zabilla about the coming into town and paving, parking. So, um, I think the landscaping could be the solution, especially if it was really natural and just kind of integrated, uh, for screening. Um, and then once again, definitely have a definition about, you know, a maximum days of use, the hours and what have you, um, have that built into it, especially if we're, we're calling it temporary or it sounds like it's more like occasional rather than temporary.
Yeah, it's a hard word to nail down in this case.
Part time.
Part time, part, yeah. But, um, yeah, I wish it wasn't there, that it didn't have to be there. I mean, but I understand it's right next door, so there's that convenience component to it.
That very makes you think of a use that has a definite end after which the use is no longer.
Right.
Correct.
That's what it would mean to me and I don't think that's what you intend here.
And I guess it really depends too on if the property was purchased or if it was leased and, I mean, you have more, more work to do, obviously.
Right, and, um, exactly. It's, it's, it's hard to nail down. This is the need at this point in time.
Okay.
Um, what could happen in the future is anybody's guess, but we know that this is something that we'd like to address now, you know, and it's answered our needs at this point in time.
We'll be creative with it.
Right, and I think, you know, uh, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate everybody's comments. I really do, uh, because we're kind of getting to an area that you don't, don't actually, uh, doesn't happen a lot, you know, this is, this is new territory. But, um, and we want to do it the best way and be, um, you know, sensitive to, to, to all the concerns. Um, I like the idea that, I think we're going to have to explore, uh, the different permeabilities of various, you know, s, uh, soils and substrates that would allow us to park on. Uh, and I, I think that can be done. I know throughout history, we've always done basic sand and gravel and that works. Um, but, you know, maybe we can, we, we can play with those ideas and, uh, we want to keep it clean. And, uh, I think that's the, uh, the idea of, like you're suggesting, the railroad ties is just to create a border to contain everything. Uh, there, as Commissioner Zabilla indicated, there's been recently a lot of earth movement going on over there. Um, and, uh, and that's something that we have to, that just is happening.
Uh, I believe they, they, well, I don't know, that's, weren't they asked to remove it? Nope? Okay.
So there's a full-on grading permit and all that going?
Yeah, they're just losing the soil and adding a little bit. But, you know, one other question I just wanted, or one comment was, and this gets back to the environmental thing. I mean, normally now if you're building a parking lot, you have to deal with your, your runoff, your water. Where's it going to go and, you know, um, and a lot of times that has to do with you putting bio filtration. And that's a cleansing process. Well, it could be a tank, it could be a rain garden or even a bio swell. Um, and I'm not saying that you have to do it, but there's a reason for doing that and it's to keep the, the pollutants, you know, the first flush and what have you out of the water system. Um, and then I'm just wondering, is there a threshold where if it's, there's so many cars, there are going to be so many days out of the year, which equals so many pollutants, then does that trigger environmentally something like a filtration system? Complicated or not, having to be installed?
That's a question for staff, yeah.
You've listed as an issue.
Oh, you did, okay.
Okay.
I should have looked over there. Sorry.
Are those thresholds determined by the number of vehicles or what's the criteria? Or if you know, I'm just curious.
Well, it's in part size of the area that's being disturbed. Um, it's just something we would have to consult with the county on, um, regarding how their, what their interpretation of the use would be.
That's where the line between permanent and temporary comes into place. The standards may be different if it's a temporary, temporary parking lot versus a permanent parking lot. So it is one of several issues to be sorted out.
So going into this for me, uh, I was defined temporary as being, um, uh, limited time duration use.
I think the county standards draw distinction between temporary and permanent and intermittent. Intermittent would be this used occasionally, but not all the time.
And that's really what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I, I think staff had understood this was a temporary with a possibility to be, would be removed. What I now understand is under discussion is an intermittent use parking lot. That is a different category, but again, we don't know off the top of our head the standards. But it's a question that we had with the county and, and, um, the public works department as the city's public works department is involved in the MS4 standards.
That's a, that, uh, that helps me understand the, the situation a little clearer. Um, so coming back to you, uh, the next step would be design review. And wanting to know, uh, what exactly you're going to want, uh, be looking for in, at that, at that point in time. Um, is, you have some suggestions or advice you want to share with me at this point?
Mr. Chair, just to the question, uh, the use, the development application would require designer review. And staff's, um, question to you essentially is, um, whether or not you're comfortable with this different kind of use, uh, being qualified as such by the commission in the form of a conditional use permit. So those are the two permit vehicles that we think, um, are possible and we're looking for feedback in that regard. And as to the, this use definition, again, it comes back to how often, how frequent, um, and then the development standards associated with something that's not permanent with, uh, you know, stormwater controls, lighting and landscaping.
So you want to know?
So you want to know if we think a CUP would be appropriate here? Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay. So Commissioner Nolan?
So for me, I would want to know environmentally if this is going to be considered a permanent lot or an intermittent lot. And to me, that would be my base for making a decision. Then I would have a better idea of, you know, if, if it was a permanent lot, that's, it's a different story, and the requirements would be different. So it's kind of hard for me to say at this point without having some base information, base data.
Well, and remember, he's just one person. He's just leasing the property, you know?
Right.
So, so there's mission creep that's likely to occur.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I think without having that information and even that environmental information, it's hard to, I, I couldn't say right now.
Well, there's.
I was just wondering if any light from your property would fall on this property because at this time of the year, by five o'clock, it's dark. So if you're open till eight o'clock, there'll be people walking to their car in the dark, and there probably needs to be some kind of lighting there as well.
Probably the solution that would be an occasional ballard, you know, for, on the walking path through the, through the lot to define pathways and whatnot.
So the other option is also to, to design for more of a permanent, you know, just go at that, because we're really just talking about bioswells. I've been building a lot of Kathy's bioswells lately. And, and they're, it's grading, you know, it's grading, and it's introducing, you know, the sand of different layers into it. It's not that complicated. And in, in the, in the end, it may just be the right thing to do and build it more permanently, and not, not permanently in the sense of permeability, you know, still have that function, but have that, kind of, that runoff taken care of, you know, in that. So if, if you approached it in that way, you're almost dealing with the worst-case scenario and probably get more, you certainly get less scrutiny here because you've dealt with those issues, those environmental issues right up front. I don't know.
I guess I just got a little confused. If it's impervious, then we need to control the runoff, but if it's permeable, we don't.
Maybe. That's, that's the problem with permeable surfaces. They have a certain amount of permeability to them.
So even if we, so you're suggesting even if we'd go with the permeable, that we want to introduce some sort of water retention?
I don't know yet, yeah.
That needs to be determined.
So we could possibly provide you with some sort of data, or study, or whatever that addresses water runoff.
I think the intermittent definition and requirements are what we need to understand to go forward, because it really is going to be intermittent versus temporary, you know, temporary.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the issue really, again, is, is the use. And my, my sense is that the, that generally the commission would support it with certain, if it meets certain standards and so on. So I think this discussion's been helpful to staff. We found out a little bit more about how the, the facility would be managed and used. I think the next step would be to have further discussions. We probably need a soils report. We need to have, I think that the MS4 issue needs to be addressed depending on the type of base that is going to be used, which is going to be driven in part by a soils report and percolation and issues like that. And then we can determine what stormwater treatment strategy, if any, is necessary based on the type of base and material that's used. So I think that, I think that's, that's helpful, and we can go from there.
Okay, good.
That answers your question.
Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you. One thing that we have not discussed here up to this point is whether there is a sense of urgency about the project. I, I'm guessing that there is, and I'm curious how quickly you have to give up how much of your Boku parking? Or is that something that you could negotiate, a tapering off of the, the usage?
I guess, you know, I think we can kind of taper off depending on when we can move forward with an alternative.
I mean, if Boku said, 1st of January, I want my whole parking lot back, you're in a bad place. But.
Yes. That's one way of putting it.
But so when, when do you really need to know about what you, what, what the commission, the city, whatever, will allow you to do there, if anything?
I mean, sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Because there's, you know, it's, it's coming to a point where, you know, they're going to want to do things on the weekends when we want the parking lot as well. And so, just, I mean, the, the best answer is, you know, as soon as possible.
There's no, like, a deadline or anything like that in place at this point. It's all.
Just being discussed.
Being discussed between the two. There's, there's pressure involved. And that's why we're here, running with this. It's, and I don't want to interrupt your discussion, sir. The idea of intermittent versus permanent, does that, you even mentioned the county for defining that, or is that, did I understand that correctly?
Well, the county's the, the manager of the MS4 regulations. We would work with our public works department, and they may have to do some consultation with the county.
Okay, MS4 is a?
Municipal Storm Secrative Sewer System.
It's the, it's the county's Clean Water Act permit.
All right.
Mr. Nolan?
So my other question is, and I believe this occurred with your permit when you built the project. How many parking spaces were allowed to be parked, let's say off-site, like at Boku, or maybe the Ojai Valley Inn? Was there a certain threshold or a certain maximum number that you were allowed? In other words, when you did your traffic study, oh, there wasn't many. So in other words, the, the parking that you have onsite accommodates all your parking needs?
No.
Well, I know that. But where I'm going with that is.
It met the code.
It met the code. And then, so the agreement with Boku or the Ojai Valley Inn was completely separate and not required as part of your.
Correct.
Parking requirements.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of where I was going.
That is correct. There's a difference between the level of parking demanded by their commercial establishment.
Exactly.
On a marketing basis.
Okay.
And the level of parking required by the code. The project met the code parking requirements to the parking onsite, I believe with the variance, if I remember the facts exactly right. But, and I'm, maybe I don't have the, my memory may not be right there, but as I understand it, they met the parking standards, and they still continue to meet their existing parking standards with the parking onsite. However, that proved inadequate in the market, and so they went and acquired additional parking.
Okay, so now, if, and this kind of gets back to that whole threshold, if the county says, hey, that's, now that's considered permanent parking or not, or the city defines that, will they be required to do a traffic study because now they're having, accommodating more cars? Is that possible?
We haven't.
You haven't, you know, looked at that? Yeah, okay, just, that was just something that came up. Okay.
Okay.
Sequel analysis hasn't been done yet because it wasn't clear to the applicant or to staff whether the commission was remotely interested.
Okay.
In the particular land use. So some of these questions that were surfacing at this point are the exact kind of questions that will be considered in the sequel process.
Okay.
Okay. So as far as the commission's concerned, I think we are okay on the use. Is there anybody who has a concern with the use per se, not necessarily the details of it, but just in terms of moving forward? Commissioner Zabilla?
Yes, I don't, I don't think that should be parking lot. I don't, I just think that, just to remind everybody, we cut the parking on this project at the very end. And we all were asked, oh, please, just cut, you know, let us expand. Remember the expansion at the end where the whole design changed? And, and the, the assurance was that you had adequate parking and that there wouldn't be events. And we said, if you're going to have a fence, because obviously use can change, you have to do a temporary use permit to accommodate the parking. And that was what was supposed to happen. And there have, there, I asked the question, have any temporary use permits been pulled? And there have not been any. So, you know, just hard to work with you guys when, for me, when, when you say one thing and it just doesn't sort of, you don't meet what the requirement was.
My understanding was that we could not do any of these events unless we had adequate parking. And I think I talked about the fact that I was negotiating with the inn to use, you know, at what's called the Boku parking lot now, to use that for, you know, when we needed it. And so I, I think we were kind of covered under that because there was more than ample parking over at that lot. And I had an agreement with the inn that I could use it. And so that seemed to cover any of the issues in terms of needing more parking.
I think the concern, Larry, is that it just, we, the assurance this commission got was that there weren't going to be, it was not going to be an event center, and it has really turned into that. And that's, you know, obviously, a lot of people appreciate the contribution to the community and all of that other stuff, but it just, to me, comes down to, you know, we approve things based on, really not assurances, but, but things that, you know, we, we try to work with people based on, yes, what they say, and we try to condition it accordingly. And it's just hard then to, to hear going forward, well, it's just going to be intermittent, it's just going to be this, it's going to be that. And then we say, oh, we're going to condition it, but then there's no enforcement. So I just think, you know, this is not, this is much bigger than Boku, is it not, the parking? I mean, this is 20,000 square feet. This is a chunk. This is most of that space. How many, how many parking spaces are in a Boku? That's not 80.
I think they have 85.
Okay, well, in any event.
We're looking at about 85.
I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm not excited about a parking lot there.
Okay. So we have one no vote?
It's not voting.
We're not voting, I know. I'm just trying to get a sense for, because you were asking, are we okay with the use?
One leaning this way.
Yes, all right. Okay. So do you have enough information, Mr. Nolan?
Yes, I agree. We have sufficient direction, thank you.
Excellent. Do you guys have enough information? More or less? I guess you're going to get more information.
We will get, we will get more information. It's, you know, I, I'd probably just throw out some, you know, parting comments, like some of the previous guys here, that, you know, there is, there's a huge financial investment in the Topo Mountain Winery, and that's all from me. And, you know, I understand, I see, you know, parking is such an incredible issue in this town, and we're talking about providing more parking, which isn't going to be free to me. It's going to be another very large expense and which will help with some of the, the traffic and parking issues that we have in this town. So I, I just think it's, it's a win-win. I mean, I can understand, you know, you could take an argument on, you don't want to see a parking lot, but we need more parking. And no one else is stepping up and building the parking lot. I'm trying to create, you know, sort of a natural-looking place to park cars. And like I said, that, it's not going to be cheap to do that.
Great, thank you.
Well, I agree, and I think it's probably necessary, and it seems like that's a reasonable place to have it. It's kind of outside of the downtown. I mean, it needs to go somewhere.
I don't think people are going to be parking there and walking downtown. But I don't think people will be parking there and walking downtown.
No, I'm not saying that, but they have events there.
Right.
And they need parking, so that's realistic. And if it's, you know, brings people to town, it, it's good for the town.
And, and if it's visually attractive, that is to say.
And you do the best job with the water runoff that you can, I think that's what we can ask.
I think we'll have less problem with it.
I think we have a good sense of what we're hearing, Larry, and have enough to work with. We can communicate with staff a little bit to get more information on that end and try to come up with a solution that's agreeable to, hopefully to the city and winery. So we thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for bringing this forward as a concept so we could talk about it.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Yeah. That concludes our discussion items. Do we need to talk about sub-commissions today, or can we defer that to a future meeting?
That's how you're describing.
It's 9:30 already, and I would just as soon defer that to a further meeting, yes?
Can I make one comment?
You may.
And I'm on.
You, you are like an expert in this area, so.
Number six. And I, this may have been my fault, but I know the first recommendation is decide whether to disband the sustainability committee. And what I actually had asked for, and I, maybe I didn't convey this correctly, was to have, to get on the agenda for the city council, because we wanted to talk to them to find out if we were going in the right direction, or we wanted to provide them information that they wanted, not going off on a tangent or what we thought was important. And that was what my request was. So not necessarily to come back here and do it, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that on my end.
Be in favor of that.
Yeah.
Go talk to the city council about what they want you to do.
But it, but I will say, I went, and I just went as myself. I did say I was a planning commissioner, and I wasn't representing the commission, but I did go Monday night because of the fire. And a lot of what I had said that night when I made that request was that I said the two most important things were fire and water. So I felt it was good for me to show up, just my three minutes, you know, on public comment time. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. So we're going to skip over item six, and move to item eight.
Actually, Mr. Chairman.
A little out of date at this point.
Mr. Chairman, if I could go back to item seven?
We could.
We actually would like you to consider canceling the meeting of January 3rd, 2018. We have no items scheduled for that evening, and due to the holidays, it would be difficult to produce a packet in any event.
All right. Is there any objection to, do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
All right. Could we have someone make a proposal, yes?
I'll make a motion that we cancel the regular planning commission for January 3rd, 2018.
All right.
A second.
Thank you. Could we have a rule call, please?
Nolan?
Yes.
Jagiello? Corbin?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Yes.
Zabilla?
Yes.
Okay. Director decisions? We're kind of a month behind on those, but.
Nothing significant to report. All these events have already occurred.
Yeah.
I just mentioned at this point that the commission is scheduled to have a joint meeting with the city council on January 9th. The commission always has a joint meeting, I understand, the first meeting of the, of the council's year. So we would welcome your identification of any topics you want to discuss. The, the issue of the sustainability committee could be.
Okay.
Certainly placed on that agenda. Anything else? You can offer that now, or feel free to email Sherry and, and me, and we'll make sure those get on the, on the list.
Yeah, thank you. We did a lot of work over email just regarding this meeting, so I think that might be a good way to go if anybody has items we'd want to do for the city council.
So if I could request that we, let's, I'll have to clarify timing of the packet, but if we could have your list of topics, yes. I think that would be, we would need those by the 27th. A week from today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Future agenda items is pretty open at this point.
Yep. Nothing pending.
Thank you. Planning Commission Committee reports. Commissioner Zabilla? No?
Too long ago.
Yeah. Commissioner Powers isn't here. I think the building appeals board meeting got canceled.
And I went to the one last night.
Oh, yeah? Oh, there was one last night, yeah.
Yeah, unfair, but I can do that next time. Complete Streets, we got.
Last night.
Yeah, last night. I was canceled because of the fire.
Yeah.
Or I, I canceled.
Thank you. That brings us to our mayor pro tem, but we have a special announcement before that.
Okay, I'm going to read this, just because I might get choked up. Four years ago this February, I made a four-year commitment to the planning commission. And though the city decided to extend that committee, that commitment for several months, I didn't agree to that. And so I have decided to conclude my service. And so I have decided to conclude my service tonight. My bimonthly participations in these meetings has been extremely demanding, often rewarding, and especially in the last year, sometimes upsetting. I have concluded that my volunteer efforts on behalf of my community would be better spent devoted to the four-member committee that I'm on called the Water Advisory Group, the focus of which is establishing water security in the valley. I want to thank the city and my fellow commissioners for the opportunity to serve. I also want to thank the people, friends and strangers, who took the time to thank me. It helped immensely. I wish everyone much healing from the fire and whatever joy you can find in this holiday season. Thank you.
Commissioner Zavala, thank you. You will be greatly missed, and I really appreciated the years you spent on the commission.
Thank you.
It was, I can't believe you don't want to keep sitting in these meetings, you know? They're so much fun.
How much more fun could it be?
I don't know. Councilmember Wydrick?
Very quickly. First of all, I am no longer mayor pro tem, I'm very happy to say. My two-year stint is over, and the new mayor pro tem is Councilperson Haney. We'll probably get back into normal one-year rotations. Commissioner Zavala, you made a real contribution. I'm sorry to see you go, but I know you're making an essential contribution to the Water Advisory Group, and I'm looking forward to hearing more from the Water Advisory Group at the beginning of 2018. And I hope you don't go much beyond the beginning of 2018.
No, we'll come out of the closet.
So thank you. Overall, I think we all recognize we're in a changed environment here in terms of how we need to deliberate, how we need to govern the city. Between the water emergency, the economic distress of our entire merchant community, business community in general, the fire situation, all interacting with now, don't forget, a completely new tax code.
That's right.
Which is going to have impacts disproportionately on California, if you haven't thought about I'm going to suggest a couple of things, personal observations. And for, and I think you saw some of this at the last council meeting, where in response to the Waterwise referral for us to look at, the response of council was, you know, we've got to organize our deliberations to be more effective, to get to conclusions, to get to actions. We don't have as much luxury of time as we may have had in the past. And, for example, the council said, "Look, you know, the commission said, please look at these rankings of the different Waterwise options and some sort of a benefit cost or cost-effective approach." And we just said, you know, "We really don't know how to proceed unless that's there." You know, we want to look at the issue of net zero. Are there examples of where this is done on regional versus non-regional basis? Are there some, you know, there was, I think, a, there was actually a motion, you know, in a sense, from the council of, I would say, using that as a specific example, that we need to try to come to these meetings, council commissions, as organized and as focused on possible in looking at alternatives and making decisions. Because we probably, again, to repeat myself, personal comment, personal observation, we've got to be more efficient with our decision-making across the board, I think. Because of the nature of the challenges that we're facing, that are only beginning to come into focus. Really sorry to hear about Ray. You know, we were so blessed inside the city limits not to have fire damage to any structure, but that is certainly not the case with our, the community, and we are one community in the valley outside of the city limits. And Ray is only, you know, the one touch that we've had right here on this commission, but all kinds of people are under a lot of stress right now. My understanding, I didn't, I fulfilled an obligation with my wife to not be married to the city for once and go out with friends last night, rather than go to the BAV meeting. She kind of said, "Bill," you know, and I said, "I understand." My understanding, however, is that was very productive.
Very informative.
And very informative and very productive, and it gave us a lot of information about how to move forward in terms of interacting with the state fire maps that have been very, this is a perfect example, I think. In the past, we maybe didn't really care. We care now. And to find out that, for example, Mr. Quilisi, you're on, if you could, I wasn't there, but my understanding from talking to the chair is that there clearly is going to be a receptiveness and an ability to fine-tune the broad brush strokes coming from CAL FIRE's maps to what, especially inside the city limits or even inside the sphere of influence, can be very productive for our immediate community. And that was really encouraging, and a lot of these things became clarified, and I think it was a really, from what I understand, a good step forward. Mr. Quilisi, did you want to add something to that? I appreciate it.
I would say there was good and bad in that. The good was that both the Ventura County fire folk and the CAL FIRE folk were standing ready to work with the city, to consult with us on how we might best...
Augment there?
I'm not going to say create a fire map. I've been searching through the general plan, I can't find a fire map.
How about better articulate the fire map?
But to, well, to articulate the fire map for...
Our needs.
For our needs as imposed by our city government.
Right.
The downside of that was, and I think the CAL FIRE lead here made it very clear last night, you know, the current, the current map says red at the top and bottom of the city and hair-on-fire kind of thought.
Right.
And the rest of it is all gray.
Right, and there's an immediate, immediate shift...
Right.
From hair-on-fire to no problem.
To no problems at all.
Which obviously is not realistic.
And, and it would be a very good thing if we could work with all of those folks to get some gradations of risk, which is so much more realistic for insurance rates and everything else.
And that's precisely what I believe there was a sense that we could do.
However, the CAL FIRE fellow, the CAL FIRE lead that was here, said, "That's the map we have. When we have a new map next May, that's the map we're going to have. We invite your comments, we'll work with you. Please send all of your ideas to Sacramento, but we're not going to change the map that's on the CAL FIRE website."
No, that's the past map. That's the past map. The point is, is that we are now going to be more involved in the protocol of local involvement in the new maps than we had, were in the last cycle.
It's, it's, right now, as you say, it's hair-on-fire or no problem at all. And people that come to the valley and are thinking of relocating here...
Right, that's what needs to be fixed, right.
Need to have a better granularity of the risk.
Exactly.
And I did not get the feel from the CAL FIRE folks that they were going to do anything at their website. If we have a city fire map that, that we can make plain on the city website and then do this granularity business, that would be a big service.
Right, and there's a path forward that began to be formed last night. Yes?
Just a quick comment, because I was at the meeting also. Yeah, basically what they said was the CAL FIRE map is basically the base map.
Right.
And then, that has to hold, but we can make it more restrictive.
Exactly.
And basically, the red zone is the high hazard, but we can, very high hazard, excuse me, but then we can include high hazard, moderate hazard...
We can have transition zones, in other words.
We can have transition zones.
Right.
And then, I think the urgency that was discussed was, if the next round of maps is coming out kind of April, May of 2018, we need to jump on it immediately so we can start planning and what have you.
Hence the meeting last night.
We're going to have some influence on that CAL FIRE map.
That was the kind of plug-in to their process...
Exactly.
...that this city did not plug into at the last cycle.
Right. And then, the building inspector also mentioned, she thought, I'm not quoting her, I'm just kind of trying to remember exactly what she said, but something to the effect that the city, in the safety element, she thought had a map, and that would be kind of the map that we would be upgrading.
I went through the safety element today, line by line. There's no map there.
No, there's nothing.
Well, anyways...
Maybe it's somewhere else.
But they could adopt one.
Again, these are, we're looking forward to doing better than we have in the past. That's the point.
In addition, the other thing that they did offer...
Not to deliberate on the whole issue right now.
No, but the other thing that they did offer was, because several of the members from CAL FIRE were from their land use planning departments statewide, and so that starts getting into like fuel modification maps and da-da-da-da-da.
But then again, that is for the city.
But that's for the city.
Okay, Carrie, that's what I'm saying, Commissioner Nolan. That's for the city, and that, the point is, I think, we are getting into better focus now what we have to do to step up to complement and better articulate our, with our needs within both the sphere of influence and the, and the city limits. And I think that's what I'm very optimistic about. That's all I'm trying to express, not try to deliberate on this right now, okay? Final couple of comments. Out of the whole experience with 334, you might have, I don't know if you remembered at the end of the council meeting, there was a sense of the council of, we want to look at filling in design guidelines and getting more clarity. So I wanted to amplify your point on that, both on the south and north, north sides of this, of the, of the city. And that also came up in the historic landmark designation issue with Chaparral School, too. So there is an appetite expressed at the city council level of kind of getting some more clarity and getting some more organization to the design guideline issue. So I appreciate your bringing that point up as well tonight. Fund balances, yes, there's a problem with the way we report fund balances. Mayor and I have been working on this now for a little while. We've been in contact and working with the finance director. The city has not been reporting separate fund balances as they, as we believe, the mayor and I anyway, in our discussions, believe it should be. You know, there should be clarity to that, there should be separate, for example, if you look at the budget, it doesn't break out all the separate fund balances. I can't tell you how many times council people go, "Well, you know, we know there's a fund balance, why isn't that in the, in the, in the financial report?" We're working on that. It needs to happen. I agree. Okay? And the mayor does, too, and both, and we have a new person on the Budget and Audit Committee, and this is something that's going on. I want to tell you, it's a recognized issue. And we recognize that how it's been done in the past needs to be improved upon. Okay, so I wanted to mention that to you. And then, I just, you know, wanted to summarize by, by saying that I think that we all just need to think about the perennial question. How do we protect this miracle of the character of Ojai in the face of these new challenges? And we're just all going to have to really think about that and how to do it in the best possible fashion. So, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wydrick. That concludes our meeting.